Sorry for the brief delay. Welcome, everybody. Our August 24th Commission meeting and Board of County Commission meeting. And it is, as they say, the dog days of summer. Nice and warm out there and not in here so much. We'll keep Commissioner Seal and Commissioner Long frozen probably. But in any event, good to have everybody here today. And we're going to start with an invocation by Reverend James Fazal of the Reconciled by Truth Ministries Church out of Pinellas Park. And then Commissioner Justice is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you can. Are you there, Pastor? We're not, we're not hearing you.
I hear you.
Yeah, a little bit. Let's, go ahead and... Can't hear you. I can't... Yeah, Pastor, we can't hear you. What's that?
Mr., he just, he just dropped off of the Zoom, Mr. Chair. I believe it's his internet connection.
Oh, he did drop?
He dropped out of the Zoom, yes. Because I believe he had a poor internet connection.
Okay.
So, he tested fine before the meeting, but it looks like he lost internet.
Okay. We'll, we'll do the...
He's trying to come back on, so, yeah.
All right. Yeah, Pastor, we just can't hear you. The, the connection's not working.
Okay.
All right, we're going to... Pastor, we're going to go ahead with the pledge first, and then we'll try just in a second back to you, okay?
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are you there, Pastor?
I'm here.
All right, give it a shot.
Okay.
Just go ahead.
Okay. I'm here.
Pastor, we're just going to have to, we're going to have to let you go. I can't, I can't, we can't hear you, okay? Sorry about that connection. All right. We'll give, I'll give it a try here, all right? Bow our heads, please. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful day here in Pinellas County and for all of the residents who've come out to talk to us today and for all those who are online who want to tell us something that's on their mind. Thank you for this incredible opportunity today. Please be with all of us here today as we deliberate the business of this, of the county. And, and please be with our residents as they battle through the COVID issues that are, that are plaguing all of us in their homes and about the community. We ask all of this in your name. Amen. All right. Okay. We have a couple of proclamations today. And the first one is the Civitan Club Centennial Proclamation, and we're going to be presenting it to Jan Ward, who's the president of the Civitan Club. Please come on up as I call your names. Taria Heckert, who's the former president, Lauren Heckert, Jean, or Jeannie Davison, Pete Maydegg, who's the president of the Civitan Foundation, Becky Starkweather, and Norm Bungard. So if you're all, come on up. Wow, what a good-looking group. Hello there. Now, I'll go ahead and read the, the proclamation. I know Ms. Ward will be accepting it, but I'll go ahead and read the proclamation and then turn it over. We'll take a picture of this group, good-looking group, and then I'll turn it over to you or whoever else wants to make a couple of comments. Civitan International was founded in 1917 with a desire to impact lives at the grassroots level through local service clubs. The St. Petersburg Civitan Club was chartered on April 12th, 1921. Wow. And became the 19th club worldwide. Civitan International now has more than 800 clubs worldwide, including over 580 clubs in the United States. The mission of the St. Petersburg Civitan Club is to build good citizenship by providing a volunteer organization of clubs dedicated to serving individual and community needs with an emphasis on helping people with developmental disabilities. The St. Petersburg Civitan Club has raised awareness of and assistance for development, developmental disabilities through Park and the Special Olympics throughout the decades. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners that 2021 be recognized as a St. Petersburg Civitan Club Centennial Year. Congratulations, Jen. You want to take this? And then what we'll do, the picture will be over here, so everybody kind of get in there together. Thank you. The microphone is yours.
Hi. As president of St. Petersburg Civitan Club, I'm also a second-generation civitan and a St. Petersburg native. So on behalf of our club, I'd like to say thank you for this proclamation recognizing civitan and the contributions that we make to the individuals with developmental disabilities. On September 11th, we're having a banquet to celebrate our 100 years of service, and we'd like to invite you all to join us at our beach house, which by the way, was just accepted to the National Registry of Historic Places. So not only are we 100 years old, our beach house is accepted on the National Registry of Historic Places. So we'd be honored if you'd come celebrate with us. And if what we do moves you, please consider joining as a member. We'd love to have you. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you all. Thank you very much. Great to have you here. Good to see you, Norm.
God bless.
Thank you. Good to see you. Appreciate it. Yep.
It's a pleasure.
Good to see you, Norm. Okay. That's, that was wonderful. The second proclamation that we have today is a Miracles Outreach 20th Anniversary Proclamation. And Michelle Walker, Executive Director, come on up. Hi. How are you?
Thank you.
I'm just going to read a few things, and then we'll take a picture and then turn the microphone over to you. Please, over here, so we can, they can see you. Miracles Outreach Community Development Center, Inc. has been serving the Tampa Bay community since 2000. Miracles Outreach works to restore our community by empowering program participants and/or residents to become self-sufficient economically, emotionally, mentally, and physically. The purpose of Miracles Outreach is to provide safe, secure, nurturing environments, reducing the risk factors that lead to juvenile delinquency. Miracles Outreach currently serves girls ages 12 to 17 years of age in foster care in the residential housing program and young adults who have aged out of foster care, ages 18 to 24, in the support of housing. Miracles Outreach has served more than 3,000 youth in foster care and continues to help them become productive citizens in the community. Miracles Outreach provides mentoring and life skills training while advocating for youth and young adults in many areas such as juvenile justice, human trafficking, and homelessness. Now therefore, be proclaimed by the Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners that we celebrate this year the 20th anniversary of Miracles Outreach. Hang on, right there. We'll stop this up over here, and we'll take a picture. That's yours. And the microphone is yours as well.
Good afternoon. I would just like to say thank you to each one of you for all the work that you do as well and for recognizing this milestone for Miracles Outreach for 20 years. Grateful for all of our partnerships and relationships that we've built over the years that has allowed us to continue to serve the youth in the community. And we just look forward to continued partnerships and as we continue to grow. And just again, thank you so much for your support. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
All right. Before we get started with Citizens to Be Heard and the rest of the meeting, I should have said this at the very beginning, but Commissioner Flowers won't be with us today. And Commissioner Gerard would like to be with us today and, but we'll have to do a little extra work. So Jewel, if you can please explain.
Certainly. The Sunshine Law does allow, when there are extraordinary circumstances, for a commissioner to appear remotely so long as there is a quorum of the board physically present in the room. And of course, with five commissioners here, we, we do have a quorum present. This board does need to take a vote to determine that extraordinary circumstances exist that does warrant Commissioner Gerard's appearance virtually. So my advice is that you go ahead and take that action now.
Yeah, thank you. And Commissioner Gerard is, has been exposed, but is not, does not have COVID, but just, just being abundantly cautious, and we're thankful for that. So, thank you, Commissioner. Do I have a motion to allow?
I'd like to move the motion, Mr. Chair, to approve Commissioner Gerard's opportunity to join us.
Okay.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. You are part of the meeting, Commissioner Gerard. And anyway, take care of yourself, and we'll keep our fingers crossed. All right, we're going to move onto Citizens to Be Heard. And we have a few that are in the room, and then we have a few online as well. So I'll try to read three at a time. We have, oh, I don't know, somewhere between 15 and 20 to hear from today. Not all at the same time. We'll probably have, excuse me, not all at this point of the meeting. There'll be some that are weighing in later. But first up will be Matt Lattelier from, he's going to talk about Cross Bay Ferry. Please come forward, Matt, and your name, address, and three minutes, please.
Thank you. May I remove this to speak?
Yep, please.
Thank you very much, Chair. My name is Matt Lettler. I'm with the St. Petersburg Chamber of Commerce. I'm the Vice President of Advocacy, 102nd Avenue North, Suite 150 in downtown St. Pete. First of all, thank you all very much for giving me the opportunity to speak today. It's not very often that I am in front of you, as you said, as a body. But this is an important issue. And first, let me apologize that our outreach has only been recently on this. I think that we assumed that this would sail through, as you all have been very supportive of this project in the past and of transportation projects in general. And that's, that's our mistake. Message clearly heard, and we will be sure that we engage on anything that comes before you that is an issue that we care about and not just assume that we have your support. So please accept my apology on that. But this is about the Cross Bay Ferry. It is coming back this year in front of you, looking for some help, some financial help. The ferry would be returning with the same schedule that it had in past years of the five days a week, Wednesday through Sunday, but also for Lightning Games, which does serve our community by giving St. Pete and Pinellas County residents an opportunity to get over to the Lightning Games without having to use the Salmon Expressway or 275. But with the new addition this year of an extra month of service that gets into the spring that would give some access for Hillsborough residents to come over to St. Pete and spend their dollars at our Rowdees and Rays Games. And as I believe that you know from the presentation you'll hear later that you may have in your packets, that future years will add an additional month over the next four years and then culminating in year-long service, should this, should the ferry return. So I just ask you all to please support returning the ferry this year. I believe that for the, for this year, it's around $160,000 subsidy from the county in addition to Hillsborough County, City of Tampa, and City of St. Pete, what they're putting in. I know that's serious money. I know you guys are great stewards, but this is a worthy project to bring the ferry back and move it towards year-round full service, additional boats that we, that we can get some funding for to be able to have commuter, commuting service in the next four or five years. So thank you all very much for allowing me to speak, and I hope you have a great day.
Yep.
Chair, good luck with the canvassing commission tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Matt.
Thank you all.
Yep. Okay. David Ballard Geddes Jr., followed by Michael Bertalan, and then David Waddell.
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioners. David Ballard Geddes Jr., I live on Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor. Tonight, Tampa Bay Water is having a virtual Zoom meeting at 6:30 PM to discuss the direct injecting of reclaimed water into the aquifer. Based on legislative apathy and past disregard in the over-pumping of our aquifer, the aquifer recharge program, commonly known as the Sharp and the TAP program, is the purchasing of reclaimed water to be used for aquifer recharge credits. The logic of injecting temporarily disinfected sewage effluent and aerobically discharging chlorinated fecal nitrates directly into the aquifer is based on unsubstantiated reasoning derived in particular from the desire of self-willed, ill-natured political factions working within the system of government meticulously molesting the aquifer. Purchasing, the purchasing of aquifer recharge credits, as recognized in Florida Supreme Court Case 96332 and Federalist Paper 19, is the creating of an ad hoc third-party hedge fund and is the stemming of yet another licentious toll charge added to our Supply and Rate Utility Bill. The mental well-being of such political aggrandizements is naturally in question. One mistake in the treatment of our sewage processing would ruin our aquifer indefinitely. For example, the city of Largo in November 2019 failed to meet the disinfection criteria of their reclaimed water process, cleaning process, and had to temporarily shut down its reclaimed water operation until the disinfection standards were met. Also, in February 2021, the city of Olsmar Water Department was hacked into. Someone increased the sodium hydroxide levels, and that could have caused a catastrophe throughout the town. Furthermore, the direct injecting of reclaimed water into the aquifer may very well be the injecting of mercury into our groundwater supply as mercury is not included in on our Pinellas County Consumer Confidence Report. Moving forward with such inappropriate propagated science such as the TAP and the Sharp program is to prove infectious logic of this board assailing such a refractory scheme of political discourse as based on Statute 218.415, Section 16, is an entity subject to be being quarantined. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Michael Bertalan, David Waddell, and Emma Bertalan. Michael, did Emma come today?
She did not.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Board of Commissioners. My name is Michael Berlin. My address is 3654 Shady Lane, Palm Harbor. And I'm currently the HOA president for a neighborhood that borders a south property line of Wall Springs Park. I speak for many in our community and our neighborhood that strongly oppose the proposed location of large recycling containers that are being relocated from the Dunn Water Treatment Plant. We appreciate that the county has stopped construction at this time and that a select few of us were able to meet with county officials on July 20th. It's my understanding that the relocation project is considered a capital improvement, and it may not have been directly voted on by the board. It may not have been brought up in any public forum like today. So I wanted to make sure that I came down here personally and addressed the board and made aware of some key issues. First is the environmental aspect. The proposed location is now going to be in a flood zone VE, and the border of the site is within 25 feet of the protected waters and mangroves of the Gulf of Mexico. And we are concerned that these large containers full of plastics that are close to the Gulf is not in the best interest of the park. We are also concerned with the safety of pedestrians in the park and the increased traffic of large trucks and motor vehicles that will need to cross over into the Pinellas Trail to come into the entrance of the park and navigate through the parking area where children, families come to play, and also pedestrians are there to run, jog, rollerblade, and bike. The proposed site will also be in the closest proximity to residential neighborhoods, with many of the homes in plain view of the large containers. Our entrance of our neighborhood, as well as a retirement community, directly face the adjacent, across the street of the adjacent dumpsters. We understand that there will be landscaping and a fence put around the site, but only a six-foot fence compared to the eight-foot-tall bins. And many of our homes are two and three stories tall, and our ground is built up much higher than the low area that the bins will be placed in. It may be near impossible to block the view from our homes and the surrounding, surrounding areas, and also to replant the 20 mature trees that have been cut down all to move these dumpsters there. To our knowledge, there has been no attempt before the site was cleared to contact SWF for permitting or to investigate the site for archaeological remains, as the Wall Springs has a designated site for archaeology. My hope here is to convey to you that the proposed site will have the most consequences and negatively impact the park and community. If the recycling center has to be moved into the park, a better location would be the Phase 2 parking and rest stop, which is just north. It has a large roundabout, has an entrance, and has a gate for after-hours. I've given you guys all some handouts to go over some of the key events and some of the issues that we're very concerned about, and I hope that you guys can contact me if you need to. We appreciate you guys actually developing the park, and we know this is a thankless job, and I want to thank you for the work you guys do and for the park that we enjoy every day, and we hope you guys can see to it that this site is moved from the current location. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you. David Waddell, David Lee, and Paige, Paige Gunn.
Well, we're reading the page for about, because you asked Barry to say for that job, it's a study, so I'm trying to find them.
I had just asked him, and he was going to hold off until we were heard from the folks. Well, come on up, David. Barry, just-
Do you want me to go now, or?
Yeah, you go now, and then Barry, soon as he's finished, you can make a couple of comments.
Okay, thank you. My name is David Waddell. I reside at 4835 164th Avenue North, Clearwater, Florida, 33762. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak with you today. I want to thank you for all your good work. We've been a neighborhood, I'm also the president of Pinellas Groves Hamlet Citizens Committee, and recently a gentleman by the name of Mr. Collins has purchased some land that was ranked number four on the environmental list for the county's acquisition of environmentally sensitive land. Mr. Collins is a great guy. Him and I have been talking, and my understanding is he only wants to build three houses. He wants to work with the county on the environmental sensitivity of this, and I'm thinking that if we all work together, and I've already talked with Mr. Hody, who is, thank God, Janet Long, Commissioner Long, for your work on resiliency. You know, we don't want to cause a lot of trouble back there. We don't ask for much. I thought we were on the vegetation program, and our drainage ditches right now are all plugged up. And I haven't called it in or anything, because I know you guys are busy with everything else that's going on. But we were part of the master plan at one time for the airport. That was during the days of Pete Yacht. That job never really got quite finished, and our neighborhood has had repetitive flood loss now ever since the Bayside Bridge has been put in. And a lot of these fixes, I, I know are going to involve money, but they're not that complicated. And I think if we look for the federal and state monies to, to go along, and, and we can get Mr. Collins, and we can all work together, we of course have an eight-and-a-half acre parcel now that's set aside for the affordable housing. Well, my mind and my thinking is, why in the heck would we put affordable housing in an EVAC Zone A? And since we've lost this now to a private buyer, how about we take that county land and try and put in, which is what we've always wanted, was a regional stormwater park. This acts as a buffer or a big sponge for our neighborhood. Without it, we're inundated. I had 10 inches of water during ETA. And then this recent rain spell, the mosquitoes have gone off the map. We just can't get any dry land back there. And I know we're close to the water, and we know, that's part of, you know, what happens. But we're not maintaining, and we've never really been put on a scheduled maintenance list. And I wanted to talk with Kelly Levy and, and her group, but they're busy too. But I don't want to lose this opportunity with Mr. Collins. And if we can all work together and get a win-win-win, that's what I'm looking for, you know? We're not asking for much. Please help us.
All right. Thank you, David.
Thank you. God bless you all.
Okay, Barry, before we call anybody else up, go ahead.
So the project up at the park for the recycling center, obviously, come to the last commission meeting. Staff has looked at that. I've actually asked Nancy McGivern to actually start project managing it. It was not at her level before. So we've, we've heard the residents' comments. Staff did meet with them. They put the project on hold pending review of all the different comments that they've made. So they're going to look at all the environmental issues that's been raised and see what options that we have. We will then communicate with the residents before we proceed with the rest of the project, depending upon the location and the outcome of those investigations. I don't want to presuppose what those would be. They're still in the, in reviewing the different options that they have. But we will get back to the residents before we proceed with the project. But for the residents' purpose, it's not a project that comes to the commission. It is a capital project, as we said. But again, we're engaged now. We've heard them. We're going to take them seriously. And then, and then we'll communicate with them for the rest of the project.
Okay. Okay. And I know there's a few other folks that will want to speak to that issue, but just, David Lee, come on up, and then Paige Gunn, and then Greg Tolman.
Hey there. David Lee, 4425 46th Avenue North in the Neary Park neighborhood, Lomond CRA. And I just wanted to share some good news with you. I'm really into sparks. And you know, you do everything you can to cultivate a spark in a neighborhood or a community, and then it happens. And then all these other good things start happening essentially for free. And we just got the, the motherload of all sparks in the Lomond CRA, and that is Amazon. And think about this. Amazon looked at the entire county. They looked at every metric. They use big data. And they determined the best spot for a last-mile facility was on 62nd Avenue in between 34th Street and 49th. That's a really big deal. Those jobs pay $62,000 on average. Those wages are going to lift surrounding wages. It's a really big deal. There's a rumor that Kroger is also looking for a last-mile facility in the same area. But there's only one problem, and that is that the county decided to go with two lanes instead of four lanes for the 62nd Avenue roadway improvement. And so I would ask you to please take a look at that again. I know that decision was made under the old calculus, under the old traffic counts. That obviously has all changed now with Amazon coming. And, you know, one thing people have told me is, you know, this is a big, large, clunky government. And once they make up their mind, there ain't no going back. But, you know, I keep hearing all these good things about Public Works, and I've heard we have a miracle worker over there. So I'm pretty confident, if anybody can do it, if anybody can take another look, it's our Public Works Department. So I'll just ask you to please take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay. Paige Gunn, and then Greg Tolman, and then we will go, I think we go online to our Zoom participants. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Paige Gunn. I have one of the 70 Palm Harbor homes within a few hundred feet of the proposed relocation site of the Dunn Recycling Facility to Wall Springs Park. I brought with me one of these plastic tabs today that holds together cans. And at my house, we cut these tabs so that they don't hurt turtles and birds. Now, I never really understood how these tabs got into the ocean until two months ago, when I found out what Pinellas County is doing to rebrand their recycling program. In the words of Joanie Mitchell, I think, "This is paving paradise to put up three," in this case, "40-yard unsecured dumpsters of plastics and cans and other environmentally unfriendly items, all within 30 feet of the waterline for the Gulf of Mexico." The proposed site is a fresh and saltwater estuary where the spring water of Wall Springs meets the Gulf. There will be no permanent fence or wall to protect the manatees in the area from this trash at the proposed location, just a six-foot vinyl fence on a couple sides that won't even be taller than the top of the dumpsters, because according to staff, anything permanent would require not only a permit, but would need to withstand winds of 140 miles per hour. Now, if codes say to plan for 140 mile an hour winds, why on earth are we moving weekly the equivalent to 36 pickup trucks of plastics and cans to this location? And oh, by the way, we decide five days in advance if we should move them out for a threatening tropical storm or hurricane. In the case of Hurricane Elsa recently, Solid Waste decided five days before not to move the unsecured dumpsters out of Sankey Park or Fort De Soto Park. Three days later, it was decided that the hurricane might be headed for us, and the parks were then closed for the hurricane duration, which the dumpsters of environmentally unfriendly, unsecured, floatable trash left behind. Solid Waste seems to think that just because no one has complained about this at Fort De Soto or Sankey Park, that that makes it somehow safe or okay. This is not the case, and it's not the case at Wall Springs Park. It's still unclear to me if the proper permits were pulled for the proposed Wall Springs location ahead of time, and the process was done under the radar from you guys via the contract process and with the minimus exceptions. In the five weeks since we met with administration, I've heard that they've been focused on trying to fast-track some things, but I don't know in what direction, as we're still waiting for the promised official follow-up. In the recent park expansion, there are now better areas that the dumpsters could be relocated to that are not in evacuation zones, high-wind zones, nor on the shoreline, and the cost may be grant-eligible to put them there. So it seems to me someone with some sense should stop this and get approvals for the better locations. Locating tons of unsecured floating trash to the shore of our Gulf is not a good rebranding for our recycling program, and it's just a matter of when, not if, that this trash is going to end up in the waterway if the dumpsters are located so close to the shore. Thank you.
Thank you, Paige. Greg Tolman.
Hello. Thank you for hearing me. My name is Greg Tolman. I'm from Druid Road, Clearwater. And I'm here to speak on the Wall Springs Park Dumpster Relocation Project. When Bob first asked me to be his best, oh, sorry. I have concerns regarding the county's decision to place dumpsters for the plastic recycling just 30 feet from the Gulf of Mexico. At the best, it's a foolhardy idea. At its worst, it seems extremely irresponsible. As a property owner in Pinellas County, I recently wanted to add a few pavers to my front yard. It was covering an area no larger than 5 by 8 feet. They were removable pavers, the type you put in a shopping cart at Home Depot. For my paver project, I not only needed to pull permits and comply with easement restrictions, I had to make five phone calls, exchange 23 emails, go to the planning office twice, submit plans twice, and pay $100 in fees. And I had to calculate the impervious surface ratio for pavers. So far, I've had one site inspection, and I'm told there will be others. So I'm astounded to learn that the county can clear dozens of trees at Wall Springs Park, trees that were over four stories tall, pour a giant impervious slab of concrete, bring in three 40-yard dumpsters weighing four tons each, dumpsters which will be full of trash and plastic recycling to the water's edge of the Gulf of Mexico, yet only get one permit, and that was for habitat management that approved the 20 trees to be removed, which ended up being closer to 40. Why are citizens expected to jump through hoops while the county at Wall Springs Park can contaminate the waterway with tons of trash, chop trees, lay impervious concrete in a flood area next to homes, and do all this with no oversight? Furthermore, I am disheartened to hear that the alternative locations were not fully discussed, such as the very large parcel on the north end expansion of Wall Springs Park. This is the part that abuts the Wayloni Road. That area is better suited for the recycling dumpsters, if for no other reason that they wouldn't be right next to the Gulf of Mexico. Environmental concerns aside, the Wall Springs expansion parcel next to Wayloni Road has many other benefits. Ease of access for both trucks and residents that would not require them to cross the very popular and busy Pinellas Trail. There's enough activity in the area for the watchful eyes of citizens that the county desires for this type of project. And most importantly, it is not placing plastic blow-off directly in harm's way of Gulf of Mexico. It is my fervent hope that this more suitable area is given serious consideration for the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. All right. That's all the folks that I had that were here. So if you're here to speak, and I missed you, I don't have you down. So we'll go to the Zoom folks. Kat, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have three individuals by Zoom. The first individual is Ms. Suzanne Bertalan. Ms. Bertalan, if you could raise your hand in the Zoom application or press star nine on your telephone to speak on this item. And then, again, that's Suzanne Bertalan. It does not appear that she has joined us, so I'm going to move on to our next speaker, Mr. Matthew Widener. If you could raise your hand in the Zoom application. And then, once you're unmuted, if you could state and spell your name for the record, state your address. You will have three minutes, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of council. My name's Matt Widener. I live at St. Petersburg, 1201 Eden Island Drive. We're in the middle of a healthcare crisis right now, and regrettably, you wouldn't know that if you looked at the agenda. I just don't see anything at all on the agenda that describes the current conditions that our healthcare professionals are working under. I took the initiative to reach out to you folks today based on the interactions that I'm having with healthcare professionals. And I just asked this commission to, to understand what they're going through. And I have a couple of asks. Number one, we begin these meetings with an invocation with a pledge of allegiance. While we're in the middle of this crisis, I would ask the commission to bring in a healthcare worker, a nurse, a doctor, anybody that can communicate to the commission exactly what's happening on a day-to-day basis. Because I've talked to these people that work in units, and I see the absolute crush that they're dealing under. The problem that they have is they don't feel like they have a voice. No one's listening to them. And their leadership has difficulty in communicating with the public policy folks that need to be helping and supporting them. Number two, I would ask that you renew the dashboard. A few weeks ago, months ago, when you were reporting data, members of the general public could go on to the Pinellas County dashboard and see what the counts are in the hospitals, see what the counts are in the ICUs, positivity rates and those things. This new weekly reporting, I can't even read it. I can't understand it. So the second ask is that you folks would start collecting and, and publishing more definitive data on a regular basis. There are many important things that you folks could be sharing with the general public that would reduce down the conflict when you start sharing real facts. As an example, I don't think many people know, but that the court system across the state of Florida remains in a crisis mode where we're not able to go in courtrooms, because the entire Third Judicial Branch has decided that for public safety and health reasons, we shouldn't be having people coming into rooms like you folks are doing in the commission meeting. And if it's good enough for the Third Branch, where we're operating in a Zoom, I would respectfully suggest that to members of the public, they should do the same thing. And then finally, I would just ask you to reach out to the members of the school board. Quite frankly, the other motivating factor here for me was watching what's happening for the school boards. I've been flipping back and forth for the last couple of weeks between these school board meetings. And today, as I watch your colleagues on the Pinellas County School Board dealing with the most outrageous abuse that I've seen in decades of watching public policy, I feel very, very sorry for those school board members, no matter what side you're on, to have to deal with the kind of abuse that these folks are being subjected to right now, when all they want to do is serve students, serve members of the general public. I would just respectfully suggest that you owe a duty to your colleagues on the school board, just as much as you owe a duty to members of the general public, to work with them, to support them, to gather, again, objective information from professionals, from scientists, from doctors, from guests of the general public. But don't just leave the school board hanging out there right now to fight this battle on their own.
Thank you. Hey, David, or excuse me, Matt, yeah, sorry about that. Let me get the right person here. Matthew, thank you for those comments. Yeah, you're at the end of your three minutes and then some. So I, we got the gist. Appreciate your comments. Thanks.
Mr. Chair, our next speaker is Ms. Holly Dixon. Ms. Dixon, if you could raise your hand in the Zoom application or press star nine on your telephone to speak on this item. Again, Ms. Holly Dix, Dixon. And Holly, I do see you on our Zoom application. We're going to try to get you unmuted here. And if you could state and spell your name for the record, state your address. You'll have three minutes, ma'am.
Okay. Excuse me. My name is Holly Dixon, H-O-L-L-Y-D-I-C-K-S-O-N. And my address is physically in Tampa, but the property I am referring to and speaking to directly today is located in Dunedin. The address is 2539 Gary Circle Drive, Unit 505. That is Marina Place condo, condo tower, they're not the towers, Marina Place condo.
You can go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. I'm here today because two days before Surfside fell, I had a, an exchange with Nikki Day, who I believe represents the city of Dunedin. And my subject line said, someone is going to get seriously hurt, or someone is going to die. And then two days later, Surfside went down. I lost my father October 26 of 2018. And what would ensue after I lost him, I think directly speaks to a lot of the problems with the HOAs, et cetera. I don't know if you can see me or see any of the, I have a few pages to show you. Can you see me? I don't know. Are you able to see me?
We're only able to hear you, ma'am.
Okay. So I'm going to go, and I knew nothing at all regarding associations or the HOAs, other than my father had lived there since May of 1987. It's a seven-foot, excuse me, it's a seven-story building with 36 units. It has been managed by the same HOA for, probably since 1987, which is Ron Hugner. since 1987, which is Ron Hugner, Mr. Runyon, Brenda Chris, Michael Lee, and they kind of all, like, take turns in different or various positions. Now, when I found my father, he was sitting in a—what looked like a war zone. It was a wet condo with no flooring, and there was toxic mold, not only on his furniture, but throughout the entire unit. No working AC. This is a luxury condominium whereby he paid $545 a month for his assessment—excuse me—for his maintenance fees. It wasn't livable. Now, that was June 25th of 2018. I got him into care, and within a few months, found out that he, in fact, was—he was dying. So I removed him from the condo, took him to Tampa where I lived at the time, and stayed with him under hospice care until he passed. When I went back to the condo a few days after his passing, the locks had been changed, and drywall had started to be hung in the unit. And I'm going to move very quickly—I prepared this so that I could do that. And I started looking at what—I started looking at the details of how he ended up in an environment that surely hastened his death, knowing what his medical reports—
Holly, Holly, you have to bring it to a close. You've now passed three minutes, so—
I apologize.
No problem.
My question is this. There is a lot to this case, but there doesn't seem to be anywhere within Pinellas County, within the city of Dunedin, to address the issue of 7.18.111 as a matter of enforcement.
All right. Holly, is there somebody here that she can talk to? Barry?
I'd have to know more to be able to even where—
Who can she call?
You're talking about condo issues. You're talking about private property. You're—
I'm actually addressing the—the criminal conduct of an HOA.
Holly, hold on a minute, please. I understand—we're trying to figure out where we can send you for discussion that can't go on right now, so—
Understood.
Okay. We've got her contact information, kid? No, we don't.
We have just—we have her address in Tampa.
I—I only have an address, but Holly, if—if I can give you—would I be able to give you an email address that you could email your contact information to so that we can provide it to the Wright County staff?
Uh, sorry.
Do you have a plan?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So it's BCCAgendaComments@MyPinellasClerk.org. So it's—
All of this information has been sent to Mr. Burton twice.
Yep. So if you—if you can just email your contact information to BCCAgendaComments@MyPinellasClerk.org. Thank you.
Okay. Kat, did you get that taken care of? Did you give her the email?
Yes, I did.
Okay. All right. Anybody else on this, on citizens to be heard?
I do not have any other people who are pre-registered. Thank you.
Okay. All right. With that—
Mr. Chair?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Yes, I am a citizen, and I would like to be heard for just two seconds, please. I agree with the gentleman who called in about the fact that there is not one thing on our agenda about the COVID virus. I mean, for crying out loud, are we tone deaf here? This is a huge issue, not only in our county, but in our state. And I get everybody's afraid to make a move because of the governor, but what if he is wrong? I mean, this is about our kids. It's about the health and welfare of our citizens. And are—are we just going to make believe it's just totally gone? I don't get that. Where's Dr. Chow? He's been giving us updates. The very least we could do is get an update.
I'm going to provide an update under County Ministers' Report.
Okay. That doesn't help the people that are really listening under public comment.
Well, in any event, so to Commissioner Long's comment, Barry's going to provide an update under his report later in the meeting. So if you want to—what's that?
Unless you want me to do it now, I'm just—
So we're finished then, Kat, with all the comments, right? All the people?
That is correct.
Barry, why don't you give it now?
Okay. So the situation with COVID is serious. This is not something that we have not paid attention to. In fact, we're spending staff time every day working on this issue. It is overwhelming not only our hospital system, but our ambulance and fire systems as well. We currently have a seven-day average percent positivity of over 20.6%. This is the first time that we've passed this—exceeded the state average. We—that translates to 833 cases per day over a seven-day average, with a weekly death count of between 45 and 54. This is far in excess of anything that we saw even last summer. This—everybody is doing everything they can possible, but as you know, there's limits to what we can do. The big push that we've been continuing to do is push for the vaccine. The difference between last fall and today is there's an out. There's an out through the vaccine, which does not eliminate your ability to be exposed or get it, but it significantly reduces that. What we do know is that 80% of the people in our hospital right now, which is overwhelmed with COVID patients, are unvaccinated, very clearly. And that—that has stressed the entire system because not only is it that you have beds with people that are COVID-positive, but you also have staff that are out because they have COVID, which then adds to the overall staffing issue within our hospital and our EMS system. We're at 67.9% with 12 and up receiving one shot. We're 58.8% with two shots. As we know, Pfizer did receive FDA approval. Some people still don't believe that it's—it's safe, and that's causing a significant issue. The out is the vaccine, and so as we continue to work through this, we're going to continue to see that spread without it. I talked about the staffing issues at our hospitals. We're working with them. Somebody asked about the dashboard. We've asked about the dashboard, too. I sent an email this morning, actually, to our hospital CEOs because, again, we have to get the data from them. It used to be state reporting systems. We no longer have that in place, so we've reached out to them to be able to reactivate the dashboard, receiving the information directly from the hospitals. Several have responded to that email, saying that they would work with us to do that. We're going to try to provide as much data and information timely as we can. It'll probably be once a week that we'll be able to provide that. We are—you know, we've—we've seen our foundation. We stood up our one site. We're working on our north site. They're doing over 800 tests a day, and we're watching what's happening within our school system. We've also worked with the Governor's Office on—
Hey, Barry. Barry, real quickly, on the testing sites, again, remind people where the south—is—the southern site—is.
The Center for Health Equities, and then the northern site. We're still working on that. And then, the—the Governor announced today the Antibody Infusion Center, and that is at—Lourdes? I forget. That was just announced this morning.
Yeah, Lourdes Benedict Assistant County Administrator. It's at the Greek Orthodox Church in Clearwater, and you can go on to the patientportal florida.com. It's CDR is the vendor, the same vendor that we used for our appointments. It's by appointment. They just did a press release earlier today. It has all the information. We also have a customer call center number. If someone needs to call them, it is area code 850-344-9637. And that started this morning at 10:30, and it is going to be from Monday through Saturday, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and that's to help decompress the hospitals.
We also have other actions that we've taken. For instance, we've had a COVID homelessness hotel that we've had open, and we planned on closing that back in July, but we kept it open. That helps us to decompress what otherwise would be in the hospital, which is already overwhelmed. And so we've kept that open. We've seen our Baker Act facility be closed twice due to admissions, due to COVID patients. Again, so it's stressing the—the system entirely. We added additional ambulance units using fire paramedics who are already stressed, but we—we did that on an overtime basis to try to help alleviate that issue, along with Dr. Jamison working with our hospitals on modified protocols to where we can transfer patients to the hospital quicker and put them back out on the street to where they're available to respond to emergencies. So it—it is a significant issue. Our entire staff's working on it, but we also have limited options, and that's—that's the crisis that we're dealing with. It is real. We—we're also really pushing out about some of the active stories. As I told you, I think, before, you know, we did a survey of—of unvaccinated folks to say what would—you know, there's a certain group that says they'll never get the vaccine. There's a certain group that says, eh, you know, it's like a family of mine that said, well, if I get—I won't be that sick. Trying to convince them, okay, well, how do we get the shot? And—and so that's really the messaging, and it's really word of mouth. It's the—the number-one thing was that the FDA approval was what would cause them to rethink this. Two was a family member getting sick. Well, with the numbers we're seeing nationwide, I guarantee a family member's getting sick here real soon. And that's unfortunate, but that's probably the out that's going to cause us to change our numbers.
Mr. Chair. Justice, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just—I know all the information Lourdes said was going to be on site, but just a—a basic question. Do they need a—a prescription or a doctor's note or anything like that to get the IV treatment?
And I just want to preface by saying it is not just an IV treatment. It's also four shots that they can get. They do need a prescription, but they're also looking at walk-ups. So, for example, if you have someone in your home that has COVID, the other folks in the home can go there. You know, they're going to want to call and get an appointment to—to also get the treatment.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Long.
Well, that leads me to a very—what I think is an interesting question. If people are okay to get four shots and an IV, that, oh, by the way, has that been approved by the FDA as a cure-all for COVID or preventative? I don't know. I mean, I don't understand what's the difference between that and the vaccine, which helps alleviate getting COVID. That was—do you? I mean—
Yeah. Yes, it's—it's four different shots, or an IV, or you can get a—a shot to prevent and help not get COVID. That—that is correct.
Well, in the interim, Barry, since we don't meet again—I think I'm correct—until the 14th. You give us daily, weekly reports on the red tide. I hate to burden you with another report, but can we at least get maybe updates from Lourdes?
Yeah. If—if you want a weekly report on this in the interim periods, I was going to give that—I was going to bring in a report each time, each meeting, and I can certainly do those work sessions, too. You know, we have upcoming budget meetings and things like that. We can keep you informed as we go, you know, forward on this. So if you'd rather have a written report, you know, this is what I have staff prepare for me. We certainly can do that weekly and send that out to you.
So I just have one more question, if I may, Mr. Chair. So what is the threshold? Has anybody thought about that? What are we prepared to sit here like we've got handcuffs on our hands because we can't do anything? Are we going to wait till we have numbers that are 50%? Is that the threshold? What's the threshold?
To take what action?
Something—something to protect our citizens. I mean, I—I don't—I—I just don't get it.
I—I—I think we're all frustrated, first of all, that—that this variant decided to circle back and—and—and hit us. But I guess—I don't know what other—it—what other things you can do, other than try your best to encourage certain activity. The FDA has now approved the vaccine. Continue to try to encourage people to—to wear masks. A lot of the businesses are doing that now, and I've noticed when you go in the grocery stores and drugstores, more and more and more people are wearing them quite on their own. There's still going to be a select group of people who don't want to wear masks. Frankly, if we had a mask mandate, they don't have to wear a mask. They have reasons that they don't have to wear. So, I mean, I think that messaging is—is getting out there, and I think people are making their choices to be safe. But, I mean, at the end of the day, just your—you're—you're chosen behavior about what you choose to do and groups and that kind of thing is your choice. I mean, I don't know what you want staff to do, and I think that's—that's kind of what you're implying with your question. And I think staff is engaged. They're trying to be plugged into the hospitals. They're trying to be plugged into our Department of Health to understand what's going on. They're having, if not weekly meetings, they're having daily meetings with different groups. So, I mean, I—perhaps what we can do, Barry, is the beginning of our commission meetings, once the proclamations are done, whatever information you have, we'll just do it at that point in the meeting instead of at your—at your report.
Be happy to do that, and I'll—and I'll provide, you know, a written report. The—the issue is exactly that. The choices are tough. You know, you're going to implement, you know, some—some type of a measure that would fly in the face of—the state law. I mean, that—I—I think what we've been focused on is—is the—is the solution, which we know is having increasing the percentage of people getting the vaccine. The encouraging part is, you know, yes, it was down from 10,000 new people getting the vaccine to 7,900 last week, but that's still 7,900 more. And what that means is that we're at 58% that have the two-shot series, but we're at 67% being the one. Well, that means in three weeks, you know, that number should be up, you know, close to that 70%. And so, you know, we've gone through this period of—of difficulty, and we thought we would see those numbers significantly higher, but they're not. And so we're left with really, really hard choices, or—or lack of choices, even at that. So we're watching it. We're continuing to push that messaging and make it as available and easy as possible for people to get their vaccine.
And—and I think—and again, I'm not going to delve into the—the medical area because then that's the least that I know about. But there's a certain number of people on top of those who have gotten their shots that have gotten COVID. So—
Yes.
And to some—well, to some degree, that number of people that either had the vaccine or have had COVID are greater than the numbers that you're talking about right now. And to the extent that those people that have natural immunities now—I don't know how long they last. They're still probably encouraged by doctors to get the vaccine.
Correct.
But—but I think—I—you know, I think that—that there's—there's—there's movement in terms of those numbers that you were talking about, and I really hope—hopefully this FDA approval will make a difference.
I really hope so, too. And—and I—with the—before the new variant, there were—there was—there was evidence that there was a certain, you know, immunity that give you for some period of time, but it depended upon the dosage that you got, so—to where how long that lasted. And—and now it's kind of a whole new ballgame with this new variant. So there's a lot of unanswered questions. I'm assuming that that's true for some amount, but the real answer is to get the vaccine.
Now, have we—are—we hearing much about the booster seri—booster shots, or is that still in the development?
Well, so we—we actually are, and, you know, we're—so, as a staff, and—in addition to doing this, we're—we're looking at that towards the middle to end of September, and we—we want to be prepared to be able to easily distribute that along with the private sector.
When you said we're looking at that, we're looking at the distribution system, not making those kinds—we get that information from folks.
We get the information, but, you know, it's—it's—it's not just having the vaccine available. It's the logistics of making all that happen, as we have seen the hard way. So, you know, we want to—we want to make sure we're prepared for that. You know, the private sector is available. That was one of the big threat—problems before, but we—we certainly will hopefully work in conjunction with our sites, with the private sector, to make that process go smoothly. But again, there's got to—we're going to have to have a lot more information before we're really ready to talk about the booster and what that process will look like. That's my report.
Anything else, Barry?
That's it.
That you were going to report on? That was it? Okay. Anything else, Barry, that you were going to report on? That was it? Okay. Any other questions for Barry on that front? Okay. All right. And then we're going to move on to the consent agenda, and we're going to obviously pull number six to have some discussion about it. Is there anything else that we would like to pull from the consent? Yes, Commissioner Seale?
Yes, 20, 21, and 23.
20, 21, and 23. Okay. I have a motion for approval.
So moved.
For the rest, for the balance of the consent. Got a motion from Commissioner Seale, second from Commissioner Peters. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I didn't, we're still plugged in with Commissioner Gerard, right? Okay. I don't see her on the screen. I just wanted to make sure.
She nodded.
Okay. All right. Let's go to item six, Barry, first.
Yep. Item number six. This is a inspector general's report on the review of the Oasis Acres Affordable Housing Project. We spent some considerable staff time going through this, working with the inspector general's office regarding some of the procedural issues. I would ask Tom Omonte to come forward. Oh, Carol, sorry. I didn't see you back there. So Carol Strickland is going to walk through the items identified in the report. Almost all those items were addressed back in 2019 when this originally came to us. But I'll ask her to go through that, and then I'll answer any additional questions.
Hi, Carol.
Good afternoon. Carol Strickland, I'm the Director of the Department of Housing and Community Development, been with the county since last October, and have been working on this Oasis Acres project since that time. And I'm really happy to be in front of you to, to talk about that project and some of the changes that we've made to, to address some of the concerns. I'd like to maybe just start by placing the, the project in context for those that not, may not be as familiar with the way that we approach affordable housing. The county uses private investment to leverage affordable housing. We don't build affordable housing. We provide funding to facilitate those projects. So when projects are identified by developers, they identify the properties and they obtain the entitlements and the financing. And when they obtain financing from the county through our, our penny funds, the county buys the land from the developer at that point and places the property into a land trust. So this model's been very successful, but we have changed some key aspects of how we administer that project in response to some of the experiences we've had. I'd also want to let you know that the county administrator has requested an overall review of our affordable housing program from the inspector general, which we expect shortly, that we're going to use to evaluate both our code and Affordable Housing Manual and continue to make improvements to that program. So just as a reminder, for this particular project, formerly known as Oasis Acres, it was a severely dilapidated mobile home park. It's about 1.55 acres, called Woods Acres, and it was a park that had numerous violations, calls for service, code liens. A developer did buy that property, relocated the tenants, and demolished the home. They then tried to move forward with a section in our code for the first time. It was a new section allowing redevelopment of non-conforming mobile home parks. And this included getting a type-two use approval from the Board of Appeals and Adjustment, which contained certain conditions, including needing a site plan for that redevelopment. Subsequently, the developer determined that they would not move forward with that project. And by mutual agreement, the trust, the trustee dissolved the lease and returned the property to the county's control. And as part of that, we've been working with real estate management to restore the property and fence it and, and make sure that the property is well-maintained. So the positive outcome here is that a nuisance mobile home park was removed, and the asset is available to serve the needs of the Lealman community. So overall, the inspector general's report focused on a few key issues that we've addressed to improve our internal processes and, and most importantly, transparency. These include mandatory county-wide ethics training, new developer disclosure forms, expanded staff training, and increased community engagement and transparency. That being said, if the board wishes I can go through the report and address the individual items, there's nine suggestions in that report, and I'd be happy to go through those and let you know what we've done in response to that, if that's the board's pleasure.
Yeah, I think it would be, I think it would be helpful to just touch on these nine items and, and just, again, quickly bring us up to speed on where we are on that.
I'd be happy to. So I'm just going to go through each of the nine areas that were addressed by the inspector general. The first had to do with the code for the non-conforming mobile home park that I mentioned a few, a few minutes ago. That does require a site plan, and the inspector general says that there was, in some sense, a lack of clarity about what the expectations were. Ultimately, with that type-two use approval with the Board of Adjustment, the developer was required to submit a site plan and apply certain conditions of that approval. And of course, as I just mentioned, ultimately, they did not move forward. That being said, though, that was the first time we'd applied that section of the code. The recommendations from the inspector general is that we revise our Affordable Housing Code provisions and our Affordable Housing Manual, and that's a commitment that we've made when we get the overall evaluation from the inspector general. And frankly, it's part of our overall housing strategy for affordable housing in the upcoming year. And then, of course, training staff to make sure that those requirements are made clear and administered in the development review process. Second issue was that of conflict of interest. The recommendation from the inspector general is that potential conflicts of interest be disclosed and documented. And that's really from two aspects. If a developer has a conflict of interest, that needs to be disclosed. We do require that now as part of our online application and our neighborly software. We ask that a developer disclose any potential conflict of interest that they have so that we can review it and address it as needed. The second area is if staff has a conflict of interest. There has been a mandatory ethics training. All of our department went through that this year. There is an administrative directive, ethics guidance for employees. And there's a form that employees are required to fill out and have signed by the county administrator to disclose not just conflicts of interest, but perceived or potential conflicts of interest, so that there's that transparency where people are aware that there may be an issue.
So the conflict, the conflict between the developer and county staff was the, one of the points that the inspector general made?
Yes. The, the concern in the inspector general's report was a relationship between a staff member of the developer and a county employee.
Okay. All right. I just want to make, for clarification, did you have any?
Well, I mean, it, that's clearly a conflict. That should have been disclosed. I mean, and I mean, just putting that out on the table, that was not disclosed. There should have been procedures in place. He should have identified that. He's no longer an employee here, but that should have been identified. And when you're dealing with that, it should have been in writing to where you're aware of it, I'm aware of it, and others. And so that's going to be something where we really need to drill down into our staff, almost like a yearly disclosure-type issue. Because, you know, you put a policy in place in 2005 or something, many, many, many years ago. You know, do people remember that it's there or whatever and what the disclosure is? I think there were, there was, there were procedural issues. He took himself to remove himself from the project. That was clear in me discussing it with staff at that time. But that's not enough, because that doesn't give the public confidence that, in fact, there's, you know, that there's a conflict. And how do you overcome the conflict? The appearance of impropriety, the appearance of a conflict is a conflict. Okay? And so that's something that there is no excuse for. It should not have occurred, and we've got to do, and we've got to make sure that it doesn't occur like that again. And I, I just wanted to expound on it because it's that important.
So, so right now, that, if this happens now, if somebody comes in and has a relationship with somebody in the county, what is the procedure?
They have to, they have to disclose it.
Who's they?
And then the, the person, along with their manager, okay, knowing that, and then it would come to me to where we make sure that it is, can it be overcome or not? So that's, that's a secondary judgment. Can that person be in that position, overcome the conflict? Or, you know, it's in writing, you know, and we have that. But that way, then we can determine the, how to separate the matters to where you don't have a conflict. Be like if you serve on a board, okay? You're on that board, and you're also a commissioner. If an item comes before you, you don't participate in that. And, but we have to first determine, can you overcome the conflict? And then what are the procedures you put in place to do that? But the first thing is acknowledgement that the conflict exists, and that did not occur.
And in the future, then, when that comes to you, that person clearly will not be involved at all?
That's correct.
If there's a way to do the project without the conflict after it's been divulged, then that, that employee will not be involved at all with the project. That's, that's a policy in place.
That is a policy that was in place as soon as we learned about it back then.
Okay. All right. That's, that was number two. Go ahead.
So the third area was funding, application inconsistencies. The inspector general noted that the applications that were submitted for funding were incomplete. We had made some changes there to our procedures. We're now using a online software application, neighborly software, and it does require that all the fields be filled out before it can be submitted. And then we have a rather rigorous process after applications come in to make sure that the information is complete and before we move forward with consideration of any applications.
So that's now in place?
Since, since June of 2020.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Another concern was the purchase price of the property and appraisal. At the time, our procedures did not require that the county obtain an appraisal, that we could rely upon an independent appraisal obtained by the developer, and that's what occurred in this case. When the issue arose, we did put in, to place in December of 2019, a requirement in our procedures for an independent appraisal obtained by the county. So we've made that change to that process.
Okay. So, so the purchase price is whether it's an independent or the appraisal, appraisal done by an independent group or by the appraiser of the developer?
Yes, sir.
That policy's changed. It is now an independent appraisal.
Yes.
And the, and the gap between the price that was paid by the county and the price that they paid was narrowed by additional, additional costs, if I remember correctly. And again, Barry, maybe you can clarify, but additional costs of cleanup of, to the property.
That's correct.
When combined with the original purchase price, was still below that independent appraisal number, if I'm not mistaken.
So, yes. So the, and Carol, you're going to have to, you know, help me with this. You've read it more recently, but the, the issue is, we do not want to hold title on these properties. So we go in, we got a dilapidated mobile home park. We say develop, we want someone to go in and develop that. But we want them to take that risk. And so we asked for them to do that. We have a contract to purchase that we'll purchase the property after you've cleaned it up and, and then convert that into affordable housing. So they went in, they purchased it for $300,000, some odd thousand dollars. They then in turn put $135,000 into cleanup cost, documented cleanup cost. And then they in turn had a developer profit on top of that. That was about 21%. So looking back, again, we're, we're looking to see if that process is even the best process to use. But that's the process that we've used on all affordable housing projects for many years. That was a reasonable amount. And so that goes to how much is a reasonable developer profit for them to take that risk and go in and clean up a property like that. I think the two things of, one, us having independent appraisal, two, we did look at this, and we worked with our property appraiser to look at the value of the property post-cleanup, to say, is that a reasonable developer profit? They thought it was in that range for that time period of holding the property, making those improvements, et cetera, and stuff. So we, we tried to make sure that, you know, looking at it after the fact, what actually occurred. But we're looking at that procedure to make sure that that makes the most sense right now. But that's what happened. We asked them to go in, they clean it up, they put money into that, and then we're, we're paying post-cleanup value of the property.
Okay. So, so again, if the, if the purchase price and the cleanup cost, whatever that is, Barry, is under this independent appraisal price, right? The difference in the two numbers are what you, you called developer profit.
Correct.
It could be called developer risk or whatever, because there's nothing that guarantees that we're going to buy the property.
That's correct.
So I just, I just think, I mean, I think it's really important that we...
That's correct.
We differentiate these, that, that independent appraisal price could end up at some point being lower than what they have invested in the property. That's a risk that they have to take. The developer has to take. So, and, and, and at this particular time, the markets weren't going crazy like they are now.
Right.
But, but certainly, it's still in a market where they were in a market of rising prices, if I, if I remember correctly.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, it's between 18 and, you know, 20. So, but, but they were talking, you know, long before that, obviously, on setting up typically on, and as you well aware, I mean, these, the reason that we're getting involved in trying to move these properties to an affordable housing property is because nobody has went in and wanted to take that risk on up to now. Otherwise, it would have already been done, and they would have made a bigger profit in the private, in the private market. So we have to work with developers in terms of getting them to be able to take that risk. And so it really is kind of a partnership. That's part of the procedural issues. I want to make sure, because as we're going to go on into the report, we've got a, a group that's working from an affordable housing side, a financing side, then you've got separate, a group working on permitting issues and, and things like that. And so we want to make sure our procedures are tight, it's very transparent, and that there's no mix-up. That was part of the communication issues that was identified in the report before.
Well, when you say we want to make sure the procedures are tight, we've already put in place items to tighten that procedure.
We, we have.
Okay. So I want to make sure people, when they leave this meeting, they understand that those tightening procedures have started, started two years ago, in some cases, a year ago, in other cases.
Almost all these things have been identified as corrective actions that were already done back when it was originally identified. I've asked for a separate total review of all the procedures of the way we do affordable housing, not specific to this project. The items we took was specific to this project. Now we're looking greater to say, even the procedures, how we obtain and, and do our financing of projects, and asking for a review of that also.
I think the piece on the interest, the conflict of interest between the developer and the county staff that you've put in place needs to be completely understood by everybody. I'm not saying to go into it today, but I think it's really important.
Absolutely.
That it, you know, it seems that the develop, that the conflicts occur between a developer and the department that they're, interact with, and people that are in the hierarchy of that department, right? So it almost seems like somehow there has to be a mechanism in place that automatically removes anybody at any level.
Yes.
Out of the equation. I mean, just not even part of the conversation. The reporting, if it's a person of high rank, the person on that issue goes to the next person up.
And in, in this particular project, they weren't. Staff was handling this independent of that person, but it wasn't disclosed. And so that creates, that begs the question about whether or not there was undue influence, even, even non-direct, you know, just the fact that other staff knew, right? Okay? I mean, so you can, you can play that out. We addressed it. We fixed that conflict. And, and again, there, you know, but, but we've got a, that's the transparency that we've got to have in that process. And, and it's very, very important, and we've got to make sure that occurs. And, you know, this one was real direct. But even... And, you know, this one was real direct, but even, even if you're on a nonprofit board and, you know, we provide funding to those boards, we've got to make sure that even people down in our organization that may be settled on that board know that they've got to identify those conflicts. So we've got some work to do here. We're going to incorporate it into all of our procedures and, and do that annual update training.
Just so I'm clear, Barry, that if the person is identified in, in our staff that has the conflict, the policy now is that everybody that works underneath that person, whatever level they're at.
Correct.
Do not report to that person on that topic.
That's right.
They will be reporting to somebody above him or her.
Correct.
Okay. It's really important because obviously going forward, we don't want those people that worked for that person to feel any kind of issues, right?
Alone, right.
So there has to be, well, your boss told us, right? So there's always that, that part that's in there by, by definition.
And Commissioner, if I may.
Yeah.
Since the county administrator acted and had their administrative directed to the staff to require that a form is completed, we actually now, since that took place, we have completed that form now a couple of times and, and we have done what you have said. So the directive that the county administrator put as administrative to the staff is beginning to work because we are acting in that form.
Yeah. And just, just for the, this all happened in what timeframe, Barry? This, this?
2000, no, the, 2018 is when it really come to head and two, early 2019.
Okay. Just, just for the, so lots of, lots has happened since then to try to rectify what is, you, you're not seeing the issues, but the perception of the issues when you look back on it, because it wasn't, it really wasn't, you know, you were just coming on board.
Yeah, I was here. I can't, I can't run away from that. The, the issue there is, is really clear. Had, had we known, okay, we would have taken extraordinary steps. Some, some, some conflicts are like conflicts. You serve on a nonprofit board or whatever. That one was direct and it was significant. It should never have occurred. I mean, it, it just shouldn't have occurred. I, I don't know any other way of saying it. Had I known it, I would have taken immediate action on that.
Okay. So, so you've talked, that, that was the, the price of property and the appraisal was the fourth item. And we've, you've talked briefly about the developer profit. So that was an issue that they raised.
Yes, sir. And I did want to also mention within that issue of developer profit, there's a separate issue which is the developer fee. And that's probably what the board is more used to seeing when we bring you the proposed development, the pro forma, where they list the, the funding that they are requesting, the cost of construction, the cost of the land, the complete package for development of that affordable housing development. Part of a normal development cycle is a developer fee and that is also governed by our procedures. We use the Florida Housing Finance Corporation's guidelines for that. That's separate and distinct from this issue with the sales price, which had to do with the, the land transaction that we've addressed through the issue of the appraisal. So just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, okay.
The next area is the tenant relocation. And that's always a very, very difficult area. I know the board's dealt with that before. We do have some provisions in our code as well as in this, that non-conforming mobile home relocation provisions. In this case, the developer did clear the park and relocate those tenants prior to submitting a relocation plan, which would have been required at the time they were obtaining the financing. So it was really kind of a timing issue, but our intent is to look at those relocation requirements as part of our overall review, as a part of our manufactured housing strategy that we'll be discussing with you in September and just make sure that in addition to the requirements of the state law, which protects owners of mobile homes, that the, the tenants are provided for when these parks are closed. So we'll, we'll be back to you with more information on that.
That was item six then.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Next issue was the work performed beyond the scope of the permits. As I mentioned, the park was cleared, there were demolition permits that were obtained for that, but there was work performed particularly on utilities and tree removal that exceeded the scope of those permits. That is enforced by BDRS. They do track those violations and give the developer the opportunity to come into compliance before proceeding with more formal action in the local ordinance violation court or special magistrate. Blake Lyon is here, will be happy to answer any questions if the board has questions on that issue.
That's one, we were enforcing our permits.
Say that again, Barry?
We were enforcing our code. So they put things in without permits. We required them to, we notified them, red-tagged it and said, you have to come into compliance with our codes. And, you know, so that's one where.
So that was, that was happening.
It was absolutely happening, yes. That's part of the reason I think they walked away.
Next issue was the storage of the developer's property on county property. The county and the developer entered into a licensing agreement to store some of the replacement units on county property. That was done in accordance with the county's procedure through the real estate division. It wasn't something that was specific to our affordable housing program. It was done as a way to facilitate the development of affordable housing on that property, given some of the delays that the developer encountered. But certainly going forward, any future use of county property would continue to follow the county's procedure as was done in this case, which is getting that licensing agreement. And then the final area is one that's really important to me and that has to do with the community itself and whether we're listening to the community, looking at the plans for redevelopment of that community when we're moving forward with affordable housing projects. There was community opposition to the proposal. There was opposition when it went to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. And I think that is an area where we can bring greater transparency and better communication. That is my personal commitment to the community. I've been in front of the Lealman Community Redevelopment Agency Advisory Committee and in particular on future projects, we'll be making sure that the community is well aware and with regard to the properties that we'll be putting back out on the street, this property as well as the Greenway Lofts, we have a community meeting scheduled on September 15th to get input from the community before proceeding with, with a proposal. So, you know, kind of just to summarize, a lot has changed. We've made some very definitive actions to make sure that we've addressed any issues that arose. Other things that, that haven't been mentioned here is the department has been restructured. It is now the Department of Housing and Community Development and, and under my leadership. We are emphasizing transparency. We're emphasizing the ethics training to make sure that we're creating a, a culture of transparency. We're also in 2022 focusing on our affordable housing program. We'll be working with the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee to look at our program to make sure that we're addressing any issues, not only that, but really being a leader in Pinellas County as part of the Housing Compact to implement best practices so that we can ensure that the needs of our community for affordable housing are met. So I'm, you know, really in, in just in summary, we've got some clear guidance in the inspector general's report. We've addressed those things and we're really looking forward to moving forward with the Lealman community to bring the two properties back and provide an affordable housing development on both of those that'll meet their needs. And I'd be happy to answer any further questions.
Okay. Commissioner Long?
Yes. Well, thank you for going through that so thoroughly. It's very helpful. My question has more to do with focusing on ensuring that we continue to have the trust and respect of the community. And it, I'm curious about whether or not there might be, I know it's hindsight, you can't fix what's already been done, but is there any, and particularly I'm looking at this part where, where there was a request to waive sidewalk requirements and for a neighborhood that has a lot of family and children and young mothers, et cetera, et cetera, it seems to me that that would be something that would be very desirable for, for, I mean, I'm.
So let me, let me speak.
A little surprised that we, they got away with that.
Well, they hadn't, okay, because it was going to still go back before the board review.
Oh, okay, great.
By Board of Adjustment, whatever it's called. The, but the, the issue, the issue there is with affordable housing, so this was a type two that they had to go back, so it pre, it, it predated our code. So they were allowed to come at, at a different, under a different development standard. And that was a determination that, that they made at that time. It also goes though to our affordable housing issues in trying to have a good project and also enable the developer to be able to make the project happen. So we were looking at those when they, when they pulled back on the project about whether, are there accommodations that could be made? At, you know, access to the sidewalk across the street versus putting it down the same street, same side of the street as that. They, all those would have been reviewed as part of that final site plan, which had not been fully signed off on.
Anything else, Commissioner?
No, thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else have any? Yeah, Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not really a question. I appreciate the report and, and I appreciate the administrator's move on the conflict issues and those policy adjustments. It's just more the, the general frustration. All the years in Tallahassee, one of my phrases that was used a lot that I hated was, don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. That was always a way of knocking down your proposal and I, I hated it. But in this case, I feel like we have two properties there that will now be seven to eight years sitting empty before developing into this, hopefully a sizable offering of affordable housing, when if we had, there's other nonprofits, developers in the community that could have propped up a fraction of the number, but could have had housing in there in six to seven months that we've seen in other parts of the community. And so this is really strictly not for you, it's just the frustration that I feel that I, I hear from the community, that whether it's townhouses or single-family houses, I know they were going to do 30 manufactured, we probably would have done half that number of single-family or townhouses on that. But at some point, the, the time, and they got extension after extension after extension, and it's just, I'm frustrated and it doesn't compare at all to the folks that actually live on 46 in that area, how frustrated they are at this. And I think Commissioner Long's point was exactly right. We, we have to move forward in such a way that we don't lose the momentum that we've got going there, we don't lose the trust of the community. And that's really all I wanted to add. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's, there's just so many things that went on in, in this case that at the end of the day, there's, the housing's, you know, not there. And I think the part that you talked about also with regard to project inconsistency with Lealman plans. And so really taking into account what that community needs or wants is really important. And sometimes it can inadvertently or advertently be dismissed a little bit. And I think, you know, sidewalks for one, just other things that, that's important to a community that we try to incorporate as much as possible.
And working with Chris and, and Tom and now Carol, they're connected with the Lealman community like they never have been before. And I think that you, you see a lot more involvement, a lot more community meetings and a lot more engagement and talking about those plans. So there's been a lot that's happened since then.
Yeah. And I think, you know, Barry, there's always that, and I'm not sure how you, you know, train our employees to continue being on high alert, just that, you know, you kind of check, check yourself always because there's, those things just come up every once in a while that you, if it just doesn't feel right, make sure you're reaching out to people to check. And, and, and I don't know, you can, you can educate, you can train, educate and train. At the end of the day, the, our employees who are just really good at what they do, there's that additional check that just has to err on the side of caution and get other people involved at, at any step along the way to make sure that we protect our, you know, protect the integrity of what we're doing. I mean, the perceived integrity, if not, if it's, is like, like you said earlier, it's almost as important as, as the actual integrity. I mean, both are very important. Excuse me?
I'm sorry. Commissioner Gerard wants to.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Commissioner Gerard, for being patient. I was just pointed out that you were waving your hand. Go ahead.
It's been a long time since I did this from home. Can't remember how. I just want to say, I think part of the issue too, aside from the conflict of interest was, you know, we put in place this mobile home strategy and I think there were some things in there that may have had unintended consequences that people were, that this particular developer was taking advantage of. And I think it would not have been a, a quality product in the end, i.e. sidewalks. And so I think we need to look at that again. I don't disagree with the, with the idea of redeveloping mobile home parks, but I think they have to be better than what we're replacing. So if we can look at that again, I, I would greatly appreciate it.
We've got a mobile home, what is it? The mobile home strategy or?
Manufactured home strategy, yes, sir.
Manufactured home strategy. That's going to be coming to you real soon. And staff was just briefing me on it the other day.
Okay, great. Great. Anybody else? Okay. We do have a couple of.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Carol. We do have a couple of folks who wanted to speak to this and it's David Waddell and then David Lee. I see David Waddell, come on up. You've got three minutes. And I don't know if, it's Dave, yeah, David's here as well. Okay.
Once again, thank you. My name is David Waddell. I reside at 4835 164th Avenue North. I'll tell you, I'm, I'm really disturbed. I'm really disappointed. It's great looking ahead, okay? Anything these men have touched in the past needs to be looked at, just like a cop that lies, any testimony he's given, anything he's touched, it goes. All right? So today you can call me Dave or you can call me Nostradamus. I've been telling you folks for over 10 years because it turns out everything I've been telling you for the last decade is true. It's all right here in this 28-page report by the inspector general. Now we all know this is the PG version, all right? You've been briefed offline and on the full extent of what occurred. You know the title of this report happens to be Oasis Acres, but there's one thing here. You can change the project name at the top of this report and all allegations would still be true. This is not Chaff's first time at the ballgame, all right? You know, you all know that. Renee Vincent, Jake Stowers, Jake Stowers Sr. and Jr., Joe LaTelliere, Tracy Madder, Ed Armstrong, and my God, this just broke my heart, Fred Marquis. All right? I had a lot of respect for that guy. And there's so many more. Do I need to keep going? This isn't the first time they've been caught with their hands in the cookie jar. The question is, are we finally going to do something about what's under this rug? Okay? You can sit here and do all this about the future. I want this, anything these men have touched, anything. All right? Are the taxpayers finally going to get that $1.1 million that Chaff owes from 10 years ago? Or are you going to keep sweeping it under the rug as an uncollectible and hope no one notices? I'm here to tell you, the taxpayers of this county have noticed and we demand action. So what are you going to do about what they did in the past? This is criminal. I want their pensions? I want that recognition, that congressional recognition for Mr. Jacob Stowers Sr.? I'm going to have that rescinded. I've got a man working on that right now in Washington. This report tells you that the standard operating procedures are violated, our ordinance are violated, and this is criminal. And what did staff do? They endorsed it. They recommended it. The boss signed off. Everyone looked the other way. Some of those decisions. Some of those decision makers are still here, and I know who they are, and you know who they are. And is that okay with you? So what are we gonna do, Commissioners? CHAF has ripped us off, not once, not twice, but multiple times over the last decade. And so did Bright Communities Trust. And what did you do? You just appointed one of their officers to a county board seat only two months ago. This is not learning your lesson, it's more of the same. How many times are we gonna get ripped off for where we stopped doing business with CHAF? Recently, you had an overqualified retired HUD investigator apply for the HFA board. Well, that's a no-brainer, and you voted against him. That's not learning your lesson. You know I love this county. I don't have much time left, I'm a dying man. And I've been telling you for 10 years about this. Bright Communities did it, CHAF's doing it, Stowers was running the show, and this is criminal, and we're gonna get to the bottom of it. Thank you.
Goodbye. Thanks, David.
I'm sorry, I'm upset, but you talk about staff time and staff money, Barry? Let's start saving staff time and money and get the job done.
David Lee.
So 4425 46th Avenue, and, you know, I wrote a lot of stuff down, I have a lot to say about this, but, you know, we went through it, so, and I think everybody knows, I think everybody has known what happened. You know, we didn't need the Inspector General to spend a bunch of time and do a report. And, you know, I think the big thing is, can we just agree that we're not gonna do this again? You know, can this be it? Can a red light go off if someone says grass parking spots? Can a red light go off? Can we just be done with this? The thing is, the thing that I've noticed is, you know, you think that we're not aware in the CRA, you think that we don't know when we're getting the short end of the stick. We know when we're getting the short end of the stick. We don't want leftovers that have been sitting out all night. We don't want the crumbs anymore, we want better projects. Can we just be done with projects like Oasis Acres? You know, and we see what else is happening around the county, you know? The Grand Canal in Tierra Verde, gotta dredge it, that's like a Level 10 emergency, you know, everybody's on board, all staff. You know, pickleball courts in other places, you know, Sand and John's Pass, that's a big emergency. You know, meanwhile, over in the CRA, you know, we're fighting for our right to a public hearing, still. We're fighting for our right to a public hearing, and then we find out, the county's gonna come in, and they're gonna do two new roads, and they're gonna use swales for drainage. We know that swales are ditches, we know we can do better, we have to do better. We know when we're getting crumbs, and we're tired of getting crumbs, and I think this is just a good conclusion of that. This is it, let's move on, let's get better, let's get a lot better. You know, one thing, I was driving through Duval Park on Friday, and when is the last time you guys have been to Duval Park in Long? It's a really nice place, sidewalks, landscaping, unique architecture, nice buildings that uplift the surrounding community, appropriate setbacks, paved parking spots. How did we get so far away from that that we're stuck talking about this disaster of a project? We've gotta get back to that. But not only do we need to get back to that, we should be trying to beat that, we should be trying to do something better, something a whole lot better, and we can if we just turn the page. So please, please, man, let's end this and let's do better.
Thank you, David. Okay, those are the two folks that wanted to speak today. I'm sure that they speak for a lot of people. Messages have been received, and I would assume that, Barry, you are comfortable where we are going forward. I have not, at least in this report, I didn't see and I haven't heard of anything that was identified as criminal, and I want to make sure I'm clear on that. Was there anything in this report that was intimated that was criminal behavior?
No, there's nothing in that report that intimates criminal behavior. I'm not aware of the issues, those would be addressed, obviously, through a separate branch, and those would have to be referred over separately. There was never any allegation within here of any missing money or anything like that. Now, the procedures we have put in place, we put in place, you know, back then, that we saw, right? Separately, these projects go on, like I said, for years, and so I want to make sure, even the communication, there was a part in there where we left off a piece of a communication, so the question was whether or not we were answering them as the advocate for affordable housing from the community development side, or were we answering them as a preventing agency? Because we both have Pinellas County in our name, and so there's some clarity and stuff in procedures. That's the reason I've asked for Ken Burke's IG staff to look at our entire affordable housing process, to make sure that we have as tight a procedures as we can have. So we've refined and responded to the concerns that were raised, but we're not stopping there, we're gonna look and see if there are additional things and measures we can take.
Okay. Now, most of this project and all of the things that led up to that had occurred before you were here.
Most of it.
Yeah.
I mean, I got here in October of 2018.
Right, so I guess-
That's when they bought the property.
Yeah, well, I'm getting, the question is, is that you put fresh eyes, so to speak-
Yes.
-on this project. So it's really important that you're comfortable where we're at today.
I'll have a better sense once I have the new IG report. And I requested that, that's not something that we needed to do, I met with his staff and said, "I'm asking you for that report." It's also that when I ask for an internal report like that, it's not a public document, but I'm gonna make it public, and I'm gonna share that with you when I receive that information in full transparency.
Commissioner Long.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I'd like to hearken back to the comments that Commissioner Justice just made, because when he made them, I'm thinking to myself, "All right, Charlie, that's really important," excuse me. And what I didn't hear was a response to his concern about, "Now we have a project that's gonna take another seven years," and he did allude to, "When we have options with other developers who can get things done in a matter of months."
Correct.
So I'd like to have some kind of a response to what he said.
Sure.
And then, secondly, my last question, seriously, it is, when you said you asked for an additional report, is that, how long is that gonna take, and is that gonna stop everything Carol's working on from going forward?
No. Okay, so two things. One, in terms of the, I think the RFP is due to be released at the end of this year, first of next year? Yes, for the Oasis property?
There's actually two properties that have been returned to the county from the developer, the former Oasis Acres on 46th Avenue, and then the other property on 43rd, which was the Greenway Lofts. We do have a schedule to have a community meeting on September 15th, and then issue a request for developer interest. But we do anticipate for the one on 43rd that we could have this back in front of the board by the end of the year, early next year, for award. The one on 46th, the former Oasis Acres, is gonna take a little longer, because we are proposing to rezone it, to remove the mobile home zoning on there. And that'll take a couple of extra months, so that would be awarded probably in early '22. But we hope to get these back out and on the street and back in front of you in a very timely manner, because Commissioner Justice is right, we've heard those frustrations from the community, and they're waiting to see something happen.
And you made the comment that the properties, we've gotten them back, we paid a large, what was the amount that we paid for the Oasis project?
It was 720.
Okay. So we, I just heard you say, "We've gotten them back," but we bought that one.
We regained control, they've been removed from the, the lease has been terminated-
Correct.
-and they're back in the county's control.
And we have, you know, property issues that we have to do to remove utilities and everything, so there's a lot that goes on with that. But the idea is to put it back on the tax roll after rezoning in response to the community concerns. But we're not gonna let, you know, we're gonna move that process along quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, appreciate that. And now we move on to item 20, Commissioner Seal, you wanted, that was one of three you wanted pulled?
Yes, I just had a question, and I was trying to find out where I saw it, and-
I'd asked Kelly to come up, but I, as I read the item, I realized I had the wrong person, so.
In the background information, it said that evaluation of flood-prone areas was removed due to budgetary concerns. And I just wanted a further explanation of that, and I, this is for the North County study, so obviously, I was thinking about Tarpon Woods and some of the other flood-prone areas, if this is-
Sure, yeah.
-going to be an issue that we should actually spend some more money and study.
Okay, I'm reading the background information, and I'm not seeing exactly where that is stated.
I know, I was trying to find where I saw it the other day, but I did, actually, I think it's in the email from Applied Sciences. It's a very, it says, follow-up to our phone call, Applied Sciences was on the team for Pinellas County to provide assistance with evaluating flood-prone areas within the county. However, due to the scope and fee negotiations with Pinellas County, several anticipated scope items had to be eliminated to stay within the reduced project budget. If you don't have an answer now, I told Barry I meant to send it earlier-
Yeah, I'll look further into that.
So I'm happy to get the answer later.
Right, right, so-
I'm happy to get the answer later.
Yeah, yeah, I can get that information back to you, but I can tell you that, no, we're fully encompassing the needed areas to address the sewer model in North County. So we are gonna be collecting all the data needed to input into our sewer model. So, you know, sometimes you don't need every single area to be monitored, because you can interpolate, once you plug all that into a computer model, you can fill in those gaps. But I'll look a little bit in particular into that email to understand what was removed, and I'll follow up on that.
Okay.
Absolutely, yeah, I think we'll let everyone know, yeah.
All right, thank you. And then 21, while you're here, it's also a question for you, and this was for the Hydrogeologic Consulting Services for the reclaimed water in North County.
Yes.
I know we were gonna have a scheduled work session on this, I think in December, and I was assuming this was gonna be part of it, so we're awarding this now, but I thought we were gonna cover comprehensively kind of all of-
So we had a work session back in April of 2019-
19, I know, I saw that.
-to go over the results of the master plan and the various steps that we were going to undertake. So we moved forward with implementing the various phases. The December 2nd work session, we'll be covering just the status of those various phases. So we're moving full speed ahead with those phases, and so this is part of that, to add the supplemental, additional supply needed for North County. And so, but we'll be, you know, it's on an as-needed basis, so once this, you know, if this item does get approved, we can move forward with designing and permitting those wells to do that. And then the December 2nd meeting, we'll be just going over the status and where we're at with the various phases and obtaining additional feedback on progress.
I guess I'm just very concerned, because, you know, going back to that April 2019, there's some pretty big price tags associated with this, so I just want to make sure that whatever we're doing, we're doing prudently, and making sure that we're not creating additional rate increases in the future by some of the, you know, the work session that we had back in 2019 was kind of an overview of, you know, this is what we'd like to do, now we're seeing the reality of it.
Right, this is the reality of what we're-
And some of them have, I mean, this is not chunk change.
Right, and this is baked into our budget, so this is part of our budget-
Okay.
-currently.
Okay. You had 22 as well?
23.
Oh, excuse me, 23.
And 23, I cannot support this. This is 24, this is not you, Megan, thank you.
Right, thank you.
This is BTS, but this is 24 and a half million dollars for a new phone system, and we are now in cellphone days, we, you know, we're in the pandemic, you know, I'm not sure we need to completely replace our phone system within the county, especially at this price tag. And I just wonder whether it's time to have a serious look at all the different kinds of office technologies that we're doing, and making sure that we are in cybersecurity, that we're being very careful with everything that we're doing. I mean, this is a big price tag. I mean, do we all need hard phones anymore?
Barry, you have any comments on this?
I really don't, I have not talked to Jeff about this, and so I've got limited information. Obviously, when they're doing phone upgrades, they're going to the newer technologies, but I can't answer this.
But it's not 24 million for a phone system?
No.
I mean, that's not-
And it's over a five-year period, it's a five-year contract period, and I was, when she raised this, I was trying to dig into what other items this is, because it's all of their Cisco products, but it specifically does say the telephone system.
I mean, the telephone system, the replacement of the current system is 5.3 million dollars, almost 5.4. And then you, you know, I just, I, it's just a big-
So Commissioner Long is on, you have a comment you wanted to make, and did I see a hand up somewhere back there?
Kelly, yes, I-
I can't see who it is, can somebody-
It's Kelly.
Okay.
I think it's Kelly.
No.
No, it's not Kelly. Well, before she comes up there, I would just like to let everyone know that I sit on that board, I believe Commissioner Peters and Commissioner Flowers do as well. This whole subject matter was brought to the BTS board, we have had several cybersecurity meetings, and I would like, if the will of the board is to vote no on this today, I think we owe it to Jeff Rohr to come forward, and I don't know if he's here, I can't see him, but we really need to have him come and talk about the breadth of this, because the information we got at our last meeting is really frightening if we don't invest in this, what we need to upgrade to, because we are very vulnerable as we speak today.
Two things, we have both Joe Laurel here from Purchasing, but we also have Jeff on the line. We can, if it's your pleasure, we can pipe him in and let him answer your questions directly.
And one more thing, please, all of the constitutionals were there at the meeting, everyone was a yes vote, and if you have real concerns about how serious this is, Julie Marcus was one of the most absolute advocates for the program.
Yeah, obviously, we gotta be, there's some of us have to be made a little more comfortable, so.
Yeah.
Hi, Joe Laurel from Administrative Services. I want to speak on behalf of Jeff Rohr.
You're gonna have to hear Joe, sorry.
Let me take this off, sure. Joe Laurel from Administrative Services. I want to speak on behalf of Jeff Rohr. This was actually awarded based upon his entire budget, that's why the figure's so high. They're not spending that kind of money on a phone system. I'm not sure what the exact dollar amount is, but it's not anywhere close to that. This is for all Cisco equipment, which is a ton of stuff the county uses from a Cisco perspective.
Okay, well, you said Jeff is-
Do we have Jeff on the line now? Is he piped in?
Not yet.
No?
If he joins soon, we can promote him and he can speak. I think they're trying to get him now. He's looking.
Okay, so if it's all the Cisco products, you're talking basically all their hardware infrastructure, you know, we are a large county. And, you know, and again, I'm gonna let him speak for himself. And, you know, and again, I'm going to let him speak for himself because I did not, it just didn't flag it. I didn't, I didn't go through this with them. But all their, all their equipment obviously has to be maintained and up to date, and I'm sure that that network is large. But even with phone systems, we do need phone systems throughout our systems, and I've even questioned this, but they, they are, they go to voice-over IP, and there's a lot of ways in which people can manage the call volumes and things differently with that newer technology. And it is an expensive upgrade as they do that. But I'm, in some ways, I'm not answering, fully answering your question while he gets on the line.
Is this, is this time-sensitive, or can we bring it back to the next meeting and have him here to talk about it?
Joe, is there any time-period issues with this contract?
You are talking about, you're talking about supportive soft.
It says in the agenda memo that the contract expires in September 2021.
But if you go under fiscal impact, you'll see the breakdown of what is actually being spent on this contract. Network equipment, $7 million; server equipment, $3 million; smartnet, et cetera. So, it's broken down to total $24 million. It's actually right in the staff report itself.
That's what I said. The telephone system itself is $5.4 million.
No, no. Exactly, Commissioner, right. County has a lot of Cisco equipment, apparently, between all the elected officials and the board itself, so.
Well, it might be a good, and I just heard Jewel say something about.
We, well, we're trying to get Jeff on the line. What we could do is work on the rest of the agenda and bring him back at a later point.
All right.
Or.
Well, I mean, again, if we could wait till the next meeting and have it proper, but if we can't do that, I just.
Well, we can't. Let's see. Our next.
It's the 14th will be our next meeting.
The 14th or the 9th?
The 9th.
Okay.
That's our public hearing on the budget.
Oh, no, we take other stuff. All right. Why don't we, why don't we take items 20, I guess we have to take items 6, 20, and 21?
Yep.
Okay. Motion to approve by Commissioner Long. Second by Commissioner Peters. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Those three items carry, so there's one item remaining, 23. And let's, let's get him on board later in the meeting and move on to regular agenda, item 24.
This is an award of a bid to something electric for relocating an airfield electric vault. I wasn't going to try to pronounce it.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
Barry, I'm assuming, did you get the motion, the second, Kat?
I had long injustice for that.
Okay, thank you. This is not just, it's, it's really redoing it, right? It's not, we're not just moving it. I mean, in the moving, we're redoing.
No, that's correct. And we're, it's a new airfield electric vault and involves a demolition that was installed back in the 50s.
Yeah. The subject was the purpose of relocating. Under the first item bullet point, it does talk about a new airfield electrical vault. So, I just want to make sure that we're getting a new electrical vault.
Yes.
In a new location.
Correct.
All right. Excuse me? And we have a motion and a second on that. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 25, under Housing and Community Development.
This is our local government funding application, support of affordable housing, application to the Florida Housing Finance Corporation. Again, we can submit a project, the highest-ranked project, through a team that we can, we, a group ranked the Heritage Oaks apartment as the highest, and we would like to submit that as our project request.
Motion by Commissioner Peters, second by Commissioner Long. So, we had to come up with $600,000, the local match, to get, to be considered for that project?
Yeah. I'm going to let Tom come forward, or, oh, here comes Bruce, and kind of explain this because, you know, there are other, there will, there will be other applications, so you know, because St. Pete will submit one, and I think Clearwater will.
Only one at this point.
But we're submitting one, and, and, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Bruce Bussey, Housing and Community Development. This is related to the annual application cycle for Florida Housing Finance Corporation. It's the 9% tax credit cycle. It's very competitive. We typically see one project funded each year in Pinellas County. And so, we've often provided support for a project. This higher $610,000 amount basically is telling Florida Housing that this is the top-ranked county project. Local cities can also provide that higher amount. We anticipate that the city of St. Petersburg, Deneeden, and Largo will also be supporting a project this year. So, in essence, those three projects would be probably the top-scoring, most-competitive projects. The $610,000, we anticipate providing that from the SHIP program if this project is selected.
And you'll be creating 80 new ones, but you're losing 48.
Correct. This is the public housing complex, Rainbow Village. It's actually just about a mile north of here, owned by the Pinellas County Housing Authority. They've been working over the last few years to redevelop that complex, and they have a four-phased approach. There's currently 200 public housing units there now that were built, I think, in the 70s or 80s. And, you know, they've been revamping those, rehabilitating them over the years, but they're, they're kind of becoming poor quality, so they'd like to redevelop that entire site, turn that 200 units into a much better, new and improved 320-unit overall complex.
Are there any questions? Yes, Commissioner Seal.
So, the 48 units that they're going to replace are families there? I mean, because this is indicated to be senior housing. So, in the future, when they do the 320-units complex, are they going to accommodate families there, too? I hope this is not turning all into a senior housing development, even though I know we need it.
Correct.
But we desperately need family housing, as you know.
Right. I believe Phase 1 is the senior housing, 80 units, and the other three phases would all be family housing. I'd want to verify that, but the majority would be family housing and one senior component.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. And we had a motion already and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 26, under Human Services.
This is the final option of renewal for an interlocal agreement with the Florida Department of Health and the health care for the homeless program. This enables DOH to provide services at six locations throughout the county, along with our medical, mobile medical unit and the Bayside Clinic, funding amount not to exceed $11.6 million.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Second by Commissioner Peters. Barry, what was the $492,000? Was that something about reimbursement on the CARES? Maybe I'm, maybe I've read that.
I don't, I don't see that in my write-up.
Okay.
What's he referring to?
Well, I'm going to have to find it.
So.
The fact that that.
The origin, oh, okay. The original agreement was executed in 18. The Addendum Supporting CARES Act funding was in 20. Was, is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay. What's that for? Go ahead. Karen's coming up.
Hi. Good afternoon. Karen Yatcha, I'm Human Services Director. I believe the CARES funding for the Department of Health was to expand testing and coronavirus care for our patients.
Okay. So, that, that is a reimbursement item, or is it something that's ongoing?
No, it was, it was for, for the CARES funding.
For the CARES funding last year.
That was previous. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. We had a motion and a second. Any other questions on item 26? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 27.
Section, second option of renewal and Amendment Number 3 for the Homeless Leadership Alliance of Pinellas County. So, this is, and again, a continuation funding, $280,000.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Justice. Questions for item 27? Option, second option of renewal and Amendment 3 with Homeless Leadership Alliance for operational costs and direct services. Any questions? Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item 28, under Parks and Conservation Resources.
This is an agreement between Pinellas County and the Florida Botanical Gardens Foundation, and this is for the children's garden, construction of the Discovery Garden and the botanical gardens for, let's see, total investment of $2.3 million. Then, the funding's broken down between the different ones in your packet.
Including a group that's giving a donation?
Correct.
For a naming right?
That's correct. And there's a waiving of that, so they can do that.
So, no funding, no county funding?
No county funding.
Okay. Any, any questions? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Seal, go ahead.
No county funding, except for future operations.
Well, correct. So, so the.
Just so we're clear.
And staff did review this in terms of, because we have the whole master plan issue, and from a location standpoint and being able to continue to support them as we do now, that, obviously, that will have to continue.
And it is, I just want to note, I mean, I'm supportive of this, but it is a lengthy agreement. It's 40 years total plus an additional 15 years for the gardens, so. And I am curious what the other donations are, if we know, to make up the 2.3.
Here comes Paul.
Commissioners Paul Cozy, Parks and Conservation Resources. Yeah, right now, the foundation has raised the total of $1.8 million, $1.9, somewhere in that neighborhood of the anticipated $2.3 million construction cost. The Majid family is the largest donor, and I believe that it's actually a 25-year agreement with a 15-year renewal.
Yes.
Rather than a 40 and a 15.
Yeah, sorry, I should have, 25 plus 15 renewal, and then a possible of another 15.
Right.
So.
But they're, they're continuing their fundraising. Of course, one of their primary fundraisers is the Holiday Lights. The foundation itself is putting up $500,000 of, of their funds, and we have one other significant donor of $500,000, and then approximately $200,000 so far raised in individual donors.
I think they were applying to the state for some funding as well. Do we know whether they gave that?
Yes. We haven't heard back as far as what their grant is from one of the cultural grants with the state. And they're looking at other foundations as well, other private funding sources. And you did mention maintenance. One of the things, you know, it's an area we already maintain. Of course, we're maintaining it for different purposes right now, but one of the other things is that we're also splitting the revenue. So, our anticipation is that the, any maintenance cost will be offset by increased revenues through activities and programs that go on at the Discovery Garden.
I know that you all have worked long and hard on this, so thank you very much. I just wanted to be, you know, us to be clear as we move into this.
Now, the foundation has done an excellent job of promoting it and continuing to raise funds.
Thank you, Paul.
Any other questions for Paul? So, before he gets away? No, you're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. We had a motion and a second. No, we have not had a motion and a second. Commissioner Long on the motion. Commissioner Peters on the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. On to item 29, under Public Works.
This is a community aesthetics feature agreement and associated authorizing resolution with the Florida Department of Transportation for the installation of murals on the four entryway walls to two Fed Marquis Pinellas Trail tunnels as part of the graffiti abatement program.
We had a couple of murals that went up earlier. There was some controversy with that because it didn't feel like we had brought enough support or input to the group as far as expressing opinions about the mural itself and where it was going to be and that kind of thing. This is a new request.
Correct.
So, I just want to make sure that we've had that opportunity to vet what was, what's being asked for with that group.
We, we thought we did. We did have an outreach program this time and asked Kelly to come up and kind of talk about that process. We did receive correspondence saying somebody kind of disagreed with that, but, you know, we.
Kelly.
I'll leave her to address it.
Sure. So, we had a public survey that went out, you know, through various social media channels as well as online, and we had seven public meetings with the community to discuss the murals as well as to actually meet the artists and select the artists. There were 24 applicants. The committee selected those artists and the mural designs as well. So, there was significant input. We also actually have the, the last meeting, public input meeting, it was recorded, and you can watch that, see the dialogue amongst the members of the committee and the selection process. So, I'm not sure what, what more was requested. I did hear kind of after the fact that one person was upset, but they certainly did not reflect that at the last community meeting, and quite the opposite, actually.
Go ahead. Kelly, these are, these are all like entryways into northbound and southbound tunnels. And I'm looking at, I'm like.
One of them's in Palm Harbor and the other is in the city of Tarpon Springs, and that was one of the reasons why the city was, you know, part of that committee is because that, that one tunnel is wholly within the city of Tarpon Springs. So, we wanted to make sure that it reflected, you know, artwork that was consistent with their community.
And, and the one in Palm Harbor is down below the road.
Correct.
So, you can't, you really can't see it. It's not going to create any safety issues with people driving along and, you know, doing their, doing their thing.
No. And actually, I mean, a personal perspective, I actually liked the Palm Harbor one personally better. From a, from a aesthetic perspective, I thought it was, it's really beautiful. I think the committee overall as a team did a really wonderful job.
It seemed like a lot of natural colors, too.
Yes, yes.
And we also have put a mural over in East Lake underneath the overpass so that when the trail comes down there, you'll have that mural as a part of it as well. It's not, again, overly visible to drivers, which would create some, what I would, you might have people that don't like it, but more importantly, also the safety aspect of it. You don't have people looking at it as they drive by. So, it's out of the way, it's part of the trail.
Yeah, yes. And that, that, you know, one of the things that we're monitoring is, is graffiti, and that, that was really part of this partnership with Creative Pinellas was to, you know, through murals, can, one, can we, you know, create this public art, but can we also eliminate the graffiti problem? And, you know, it seems to have done a very good job at discouraging, you know, those types of markings that we actually do get a lot of requests to come out and spend a lot of maintenance time removing.
Okay. So, the, the ask today is for approval of?
This is actually the agreement with the Department of Transportation.
Okay.
Because it's their infrastructure, yeah.
Okay. Any questions? Commissioner Peters on the motion. Commissioner Long on the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries unanimously. All right. On to number 30.
This is a first amendment for an extension and increase in the agreement with five firms for land surveying, mapping, for subsurface utility relocating, and GIS services. The firms are listed, upset limit of $150,000 per firm. Over a five-year period, $850,000.
So, this is, okay. Motion by Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Justice. This is, it seemed like it was only for six more months. Is that, is that all we're getting out of this additional? Or is it for another year?
Effective through April 2022. So, it's increasing the amount of the firms, is what you're doing, correct?
Yes, we are, we are actually putting this new, a new CCNA request for these services out, and this just is extending this, so it'd give us time to complete that process.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item thirty-one.
The interlocal agreement for the Red Tide cleanup to be able to reimburse the city of St. Petersburg, $670,000. Again, this money comes from the state, they give it to us. We have an agreement with the city to reimburse for them for their hard cost.
So, the county, the city, the state gave us 902?
Correct.
And we're giving the city 670. I know there's an additional million or so that we've expended, and we're, that money's in the pipeline as well?
Correct, over $2 million.
And that additional money will be coming to the county?
Correct. And so, we'll be fully reimbursed for all of our costs.
Okay.
And we've been working very well-
The upfront agreement is to reimburse St. Petersburg, and when we get the additional money, it'll be completely reimbursing the county.
It'll be reimbursing us.
Okay. Kelly, did you have anything else? Okay. Motion from Commissioner Long, second from Commissioner Justice. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, Barry. Item thirty-one. Nope, thirty-two, excuse me. Move thirty-one again?
Thirty-two is an interlocal agreement with Hillsborough County, the city of St. Petersburg, and the city of Tampa, for the intercity passenger ferry service.
All right. So, we had a robust discussion on Thursday. And then, since then, we've had, we've heard from a few people, and then I think Matt, from the Chamber down in St. Petersburg, spoke earlier. Certainly had a lot of people encouraging us to think differently than we expressed on Thursday. Barry, your thoughts on this?
So, we raised concerns. We, obviously, we had a lot of discussion last Thursday on this. The, this item did come to us after we had prepared our 2022 budget. The request is for a four-year agreement for an increase in amount, but it also expands the time period for service. The whole idea, against, from past conversations, has been get it towards a self-supporting function. There, nothing within this agreement, one, guarantees weekday service, or two, that it has a pro forma that makes it self-supporting at the end of any particular contract term. So, we had requested that information, but we're at a point where we couldn't, we didn't feel we could get any more information. And frankly, in turns, they need to act if they're going to act on the service for next year. So, we brought it forward to the board. Obviously, you've heard a lot of information from them since that time, and so, that's the reason we're here today. You know, my initial thoughts are that we've got to have some kind of a function to show that this can stand on its own. We've also seen that we have other ferry services and types of things like that that are privately operated within the county. And so, from a policy standpoint, I think we need to be consistent. Whether this provides the, it does provide a direct connection between St. Petersburg and Tampa, it's, yet, and it, from what I've heard from people that use it, it's a good service, it's a fun service. Are people using that as a regular passenger, as an alternative transportation mode? Well, not now, because it's not really provided as a weekday service, and it doesn't have four boats, and it's dependable, and all the things that you've heard, what Mayor Kreisman has been pushing for, for the last several years. If this gets us to a point, well, then that's a discussion. But I haven't seen the performance to show me that yet. And so, I'm still uncomfortable, but I know we were kind of out of time, and so, we brought it for you, for here for discussion.
Commissioner Long?
Yeah, yes. I don't know about everyone else here, but over this last weekend, I have certainly received a number of phone calls and had countless conversations with a variety of people. Not to mention, several hours ago, we learned that we have had a few hundred email communications to us, urging that we find a way to continue keeping the ferry moving. And I, for one, would, I really love the ferry, quite frankly. It's a great ride, and a lot of fun to do with friends on the weekends, et cetera. And I have lived in and been in many cities around the world where waterways were used for public transportation options. I disagree with some of the comments made at the last meeting, that this will never be a public transportation option, for example, where people could go back and forth to work. I'm not convinced that that's true, number one. Number two, I know that we need an awful lot of more information in order to be able to responsibly move forward. Number three, I know we've got a deadline looming in order to start the service and have it continue through this next period of time that it usually runs. And number four, I clearly recognize that there has been a terrific, unbelievable lack of communication between all of the partners, and especially with us. I'm speaking as a, as a group now, because I don't know about all the rest of you, but I know, up until this past weekend, there hasn't been any conversation at all with me, and that's all I can speak to comfortably. Lastly, I'm very aware that one of the most stalwart supporters of the ferry, i.e. Commissioner Flowers, is not here with us today, and I think that's a little bit unfair to her. And I would like to suggest that if we cannot agree to find a way forward for at least the next six or seven months in order to give our staff, excuse me, an opportunity to have the discussions that need to be had, get the information that we need in order to be comfortable with it, and three, ask for our input about what that would take and what that would look like. So, I'd like to think that reasonable heads can prevail, and we recognize that there have been huge mistakes made. But I don't think it's fair to everyone involved, including our citizens, to just plant our feet and say, well, nobody talked to us, so we're going to take the ball and go home, or not. So, if we can't come to that resolution today, I'd like to suggest also that we defer to Barry and the staff to do their due diligence for the next seven months or so, and see if there isn't a way to make it work. After what we've already spent, it seems to me that that's the very least that we can do. Thank you for allowing me to plead my case.
Well, it is interesting to see the outreach that's been done by our citizens. I guess my question is, is, because I asked staff, is there, and I think Steve Hayes was looking into Commissioner Justice's great idea about using this as an advertising venue. So, I don't know if we made any progress with that. I might be willing to support this for one year only, but then, I was also going to suggest that it go to the ferry committee that the Ford Pinellas, and to look comprehensively at all the ferry services, including any, because I'm sure that there's some that are privately owned, that, one that I can think of down by John's Pass, that would dearly love to have subsidy.
And that part of our part of one transportation.
Right, so, I mean, I think that this needs to be looked at in a more comprehensive way, but I didn't know whether there was any progress as far as being able to do this as a advertising.
So, we, Steve jumped on that, he got a hold of, or he was working on getting a hold of Visit Tampa, but no, they haven't, they haven't been able to connect and have any meaningful conversation just because of the short time window.
Well, because of the idea of doing a wrap, you know, we've been doing wraps on other boats. We own a boat, I believe, for Visit St. Pete, Clearwater. Maybe there's some other options, and I would probably support that direction, only.
Jewel, did you have a comment?
I'm just, in listening to the conversation last week, I do want to point out, I understand that there's some hesitation, you know, among some of the board members. This is a four-year contract, but there is an absolute ability to terminate this by giving notice by June 1st of next year, and it would essentially terminate this agreement. So, if the board was comfortable in going forward for one year, that may give staff the time to get some of the answers to questions that you've posed. It would certainly give an ability to observe the usage over the next many months. But we would certainly need to come back before this board and make sure that you expressed your intent to terminate. And this is in paragraph 7B of the interlocal agreement that, again, specifically provides that any one of the local governments may terminate by giving notice by June 1st. You could certainly even adopt it and give notice that you intended to terminate it by June 1st of 2022 at this very meeting, if you liked. But that would also eliminate your ability to, you know, do some of the due diligence and see how things panned out over the next several months.
Barry, in the next, within the next month, what can you accomplish if we were to bring this back at the second meeting in September?
I don't know. I mean, obviously, you, from our discussions last Thursday, you've got everybody's attention. So, I would be more than happy to, you know, have those discussions immediately. But in terms of getting the type of information to know whether there, the pathway to get to a full, a permanent funding source, I hear that's in place, I haven't seen anything. So, again, I would be happy to pursue that, if that's, you know, your desire.
Well, I think the message that we sent last Thursday seems to be changing. And so, I think it's only fair to people who might have been listening to us on Thursday that felt we were heading in one direction, that we don't take it up today, so that they can weigh in, like the folks that felt we were heading in one direction have definitely weighed in this past weekend. So, I think there's a couple of reasons that have been raised. That one, that we do have a comprehensive look through our water task force at Ford Pinellas that is being taken into account right now, but it's not finished yet. At least, I know that that piece of it's not finished. So, there's still some work being done. I mean, I certainly, to the extent that, you know, I've not, I've not been a supporter of using tax dollars to, for this project since the beginning. And we were told in the beginning, it was just a pilot, and that, and that after that pilot period, they would, this private company, not 501(c)(3), I don't think, private company would be on their own. And so, that hasn't happened, and they're back again. And the argument has been made in the beginning that it was transit, and clearly, it wasn't then, and it wasn't, and it isn't now. Maybe sometime in the future, it will be. I asked then about TDC funds and the ability to justify tourism, and they told me no then, because they couldn't, they didn't have the numbers for it. And I don't know that they have the numbers now, although it seemed to be some indication that 20 or 30% was tourism, tourism-based. So, I just think there's still work to be done, is my point. If we're going to support a private company with tax dollars, and I'm certainly not going to support using private or property tax dollars for this. So, if we can look at other things that might, you know, that, I know that we're trying to make that connection to see what we can do on that front. But I'm not ready to, personally, I'm not ready to weigh in anything but a no today, so. Commissioner Peters?
I concur with the chair. You know, clearly, the Clearwater Ferry was running, what, six, seven days a week? It clearly took roads off of the bridge on the Morio Causeway, clearly helped with the congestion going to Clearwater Beach. County, I don't think subsidized the Clearwater Ferry for years, did we? But did we do it to the tune of $800,000 over four years? To date, we have invested $3.2 million between the four governments on this ferry. Last round on the contract, they were supposed to add routes, they didn't add routes. Now, they want us to add significantly more money over four years than the 3.2 million that we've already invested, without any kind of ROI. I've not seen any kind of return on investment. They're talking about 32 trips. They want a lot of money for 32 trips, which clearly is leisure. And if you look at the emails that we received, sure, they got the email address for every rider in St. Petersburg, and they sent out a notice to every rider. And if you look at the addresses from everyone that emailed us, the vast majority, the vast, vast majority, are from 33701 and the neighboring communities, all probably our wealthiest neighborhoods we have in this county. So, you're asking us to put on the backs of our Lealman residents, our Ridgehurst residents, our High Point residents, and all of our other residents that are mid-county that aren't paying $200 to go to a lightning game, to use an entertainment way to get there. And you want them to pay the $15 for the people that are spending $200 for a lightning ticket as the subsidy? So, you know, the people that are going to that lightning game that have emailed us and said to keep the ferry going, I think the ferry is great. I'm not against the ferry, clearly not against the ferry. I just don't believe that the taxpayers of this county should be funding that private organization, which is an entertainment service, which every single one of those riders could afford a $25 ticket fare. I just don't see it at all, not at all. And the fact that they don't provide us information, the last-minute conversation that they want us to do this without providing any kind of outcomes, and in a second route that they were supposed to provide in Tampa, which never materialized, that we paid for, that we never saw. You know, I've got real concerns about that kind of investment. I don't believe that the weekend traffic, you know, they're saving any kind of traffic on the bridge. The weekends, that isn't when we have congestion on the bridge at the time of the lightning games. I tried to use the ferry several times. Each time, I couldn't get on it, because it was a lightning game day, and so, the lightning ticket holders seemed to get the ferry booked right away as their transportation. And so, that's great. If they want to drink at the game and not worry about drinking and driving and take the ferry, that's wonderful. But if they can afford $200 for a lightning ticket, they certainly can afford the $25 for the ferry ride, and the government shouldn't be subsidizing it. Absolutely, and you absolutely can take a look at those emails, because I went through every one of them. We had maybe four or five from Seminole, one from Gulfport, St. Pete Beach, Treasure Island, but the vast majority were northeast St. Pete, downtown St. Pete. And I just, I just can't see, you know, I asked this commission to give the citizens a break just for two years, because of what we've gone through over the last year. And I'm going to go on a rant, and I'm not even going to apologize for it. I asked for it go to the rollback rate, so that we could give our citizens a break. And in our last meeting on Thursday, you all decided to add on and add on and add on. And yet, we're raising the garbage rates again, the dumping in the tipping feet, so garbage rates are going up. We are raising the sewer and water, and it's a series of rates that we're doing on sewer and water. And it just seems to be, keep going and going and going, and we just keep hitting our residents with more and more. You know, they've had such a horrible year, and all we ask for is for a break. And the decision that we made on Thursday by four votes, that we shouldn't do the rollback rate all the way, instead, we should put it on the property owner's back till 2035 to pay for the Transportation Trust Fund, instead of waiting two years and then doing the tax, the gas tax, so that that 30% would be carried on by tourism and by people that don't own property here in Pinellas County, and let it be spread out amongst everybody that does wear and tear on the roads. But instead, we are choosing to go till 2035 and put it on the back to only the property owners, instead of spreading it out. And I just, you know, we've already invested, how much have we invested already? We've invested $800,000 for four years with no return on it, and now they want more, they want over a million dollars from us, without any kind of ROI. We fund programs and expect better outcomes, we expect outcomes. We expect to see a return on investment when we give people money. But when you have private industry coming here, and I don't even, I don't see their investment. I'm not seeing it on their documents, I'm seeing what Hillsborough County is putting in. I see what we're all putting in, and then it says we have to buy the boats. So, eventually, we're going to buy the boats. Well, who's going to own the boats? I was reading that on this document, I'm like, why are we buying the boats? Why are we putting in the capital money for their asset? And if we're buying the boat, do we own it? I don't have any details on this. And yet, they want more than a million dollars more, and they haven't produced yet. And I just can't believe that you're going to be willing to subsidize the $15 so people can go to a lightning game when they're paying $200 to go to that game. It just doesn't make any sense to me. I don't think it's a good use of our taxpayer money. And I certainly don't think we're being good stewards on this one. And unfortunately, you know, we didn't even put this in the budget, so that's coming out of reserves, I assume, Barry? I just don't think it's a good deal for our citizens, not at all. I think the ferry can survive all on its own on a $25 fare without having to take taxpayer money to do it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Commissioner Gerard.
I'm sorry, oh, Commissioner Gerard, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I mean, I appreciate the new information that we've gotten since last week. And I have to say, I was actually very impressed with the email campaign, that they were, for the most part, individual messages, that people were talking for themselves and not sending me a form letter, which, by the way, everybody should know, never works. You know, one of the compelling things, and I was one of the, one of the strongest voices not to approve this last week, but one of the compelling things for me is that there, this service will not be eligible for federal funds if it's not running when the federal funds come out. That may not be a reason to fund it for four more years, but it may be a reason to keep looking at it over the next, over this coming service year. And in looking over the agreement, there is almost nothing in there that answers the questions that we have, which is what makes you think that it'll be viable, a viable commuter asset within four years? I'm still not getting the answer to that. I have, you know, as some of you said, I have ridden on commuter ferries, and it's a wonderful thing to do, from Brooklyn to Manhattan, wonderful. Beats the heck out of the subway, let me tell you. But, you know, I still would like to, and I understand that they're a private entity and don't want to, you know, disclose all their financials, but, hey, you're coming to us asking for money. And I'd like to see how this operates in other areas. How did you get it to a point, you know, give me some more information? How did you get it to a point where it was self-sustaining? Or is it ever self-sustaining? And if not, you know, be upfront about that. I agree that there are other ferries. I don't believe they came to us and asked for money before, but, you know, I think there are other ferries that would be more commuter-oriented, i.e. the Clearwater Ferry. But I think this whole issue, as Commissioner Justice said, needs to go back to the, or the Chair, I'm not sure who, needs to go back for a broader discussion about how, where the money comes from to support these kinds of things. You know, and it can't be, I'm sorry, we need a decision by next week. That's a much longer discussion than has been going on for a bit longer. I would be willing to approve this for a year if you give me a lot more information about where it's going. Because I too, the other compelling point was that, you know, the last two seasons have been, including the current one, have been COVID, 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 COVID. And while a boat is a great place to be in the middle of a pandemic, it's still cramming a lot of people in one place. And I'm sure that their ridership was nothing like it could be on a better year. But that's all I had to say.
We have three folks that want to weigh in. I think one's, one or two are Zoom, and then one by phone. Can we take those now and then come back to more dialogue? Okay. Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chair. And I also have Ed Turantik, who has been raising his hand. He's not pre-registered, but...
Yeah, I gave him permission.
Okay.
And we set that up so he can speak for three minutes.
Okay, perfect.
And we'll do that first.
Mr. Turantik, I'm just going to have you raise your hand in the Zoom application so that we can unmute you to speak on this item. And then, once you're unmuted, if you could state, spell your name for the record, state your address, you'll have three minutes, sir. And you may need to unmute on your end. You're going to have to unmute on your end. You're still showing muted on mine.
I will leave by 5:30.
Sir, can you hear us?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Kind of, Commissioner, Ed Turantik, 1607, Boathouse Circle. So, Commissioners, I'm sorry for not hearing in person or by video. I'm on my way to have a... I am attorney representative HMS Ferries. I think everyone there knows me. I've been working on transportation a really long time. I think if you're frustrated without, about the lack of answers to your questions, we've been frustrated by lack of answers.
Hey, Ed, we're really having a hard time hearing you. The connection is not being made. I can't hear you at all now.
Yeah, he dropped off, so I wonder if his internet went down.
All right. Why don't you go ahead and try the next person, and we'll come back to him.
Perfect. The next person on my list is Mr. Matthew Miller. If you could raise your hand in the Zoom application or press star nine on your telephone to speak on this item. Again, Mr. Matthew Miller. And then, once you're unmuted, if you could state and spell your name for the record, state your address, you will have three minutes. You may need to press star six to unmute on your phone.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Matthew Miller, M.A.T.T.H.E.W., Miller, M.I.L.L.E.R. Address is 16725 Northwest 84 Court, Miami, Florida, 33016. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Matthew Miller, president of HMS Ferries. And I appreciate the opportunity to just to say a few things about the project. And I listened to all the concerns, and they are legitimate concerns. But I think part of it is not understanding, and obviously, we, as a group, have not done a good job of communicating where the overall project is. But this intercity service for this new contract is, as a four-year contract, by the end of year four, it will be year-round service and will be folded into the much larger commuter service from Hillsborough to MacDill Air Force Base, that project, which will not require any subsidy. So at year five, it will not require any subsidies going forward from any of the government entities. Each year of the next four years, the service increases one month per year. So the fourth year, it's year-round. And the month, the monthly subsidy for the service decreases each year. And the subsidy this year for the seven months is significantly less than the subsidy for six months of service last year in the previous three years. So we agree that our goal is to provide a mass transit service like we do throughout the United States, that our company does throughout the United States. And it is, it is a transit service, and all transit services do require a subsidy. However, the model that we're working with with Hillsborough County as part of this larger project is, once we turn it into a commuter service, it will not require a subsidy. HMS will take on all the operation and maintenance responsibility in a true B3 partnership. So my point is, this is absolutely geared with, and our goal is to provide year-round service and to eventually eliminate, eliminate the subsidy by Penneles County and by the other government entities. And regarding the number of trips, it's the same number of trips we provided for the last, you know, four years of the service. And the routes, we've always communicated with the city of St. Petersburg and Penneles County and the other entities that, and the citizens which we're serving, to provide the service that best fits their needs. And that's over the last couple of years. We've adapted our service toward that. One last thing is, every year, we do an annual survey, and the economic impact, the results of that survey truly show that there's a positive economic impact to the businesses in Penneles County. So there is, there is a benefit of that as well. And I'm happy to yield the rest of my time if you have any questions for me that...
Okay. Thank you. Yep, thank you. Appreciate your weighing in. Any questions right now? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
And, Mr. Chair, appears that Ed has returned onto the Zoom.
Okay.
So I'm going to try to get him back. So we're going to try to unmute you, Ed, if you, on your end, if you could unmute. Let's see if we can. There we go. Let's try this again.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can, we can hear you, and then you just started, we started to lose you before. So go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure what you said, but let me just try to put a coarse grain on this. I've been working on this project since 2013, and there's been a lot of false starts on This all started at commuter rail in 1990, and we kept on looking at it, and people looked at it for a very long time. And we're the only major metropolitan area.
Ed, we've lost you again. And we lost you again.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, we can hear you now. You're right at two minutes, two minutes and 15 seconds to go, so are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Can hear you right now, yes. Oh, we lost you. You're going to, you're going to need, we only have one other speaker, so...
I'll call there.
And try to call, we've got one other caller, we've got one other caller ahead of you. Go ahead, try to call in.
I know.
Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So our next speaker is Greg Horwiddell. And if you could raise your hand in the Zoom application or press star nine on your telephone to speak on this item. Great. And once you're unmuted, if you could state, spell your name for the record, state your address, you will have three minutes, and you might have to press star six to unmute. And again, we've got you, we just have to press star six to unmute your microphone.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. My name's Greg Horwiddell. Last name is spelled H.O.R.W.E.D.E.L. I'm Deputy County Administrator for Hillsborough County. Address is 601 East Kennedy Boulevard, Tampa, Florida, 33602. And I think a lot of the failing points have been covered. I am here primarily to answer any questions about Hillsborough County's procurement process and how this came about. As I think Mr. Miller indicated, this is one of two pieces that the Hillsborough County Board of Commissioners has approved us to work on. The second piece, as he indicated, was for the MacDill commuter service. And then, if that is approved by our board, we have not yet approved that, but we are underway with the analysis, and we'll be happy to share that with you once that's done in September. We expect that, over the course of the next several months, we would be discussing with all of the different partners how that gets folded in, whether it's in four years or perhaps sooner. I know our goal would be to do it sooner so that we don't have any subsidy. So we are sensitive to the concerns about subsidy. We want to make sure that we minimize the public cost, and we're always looking for ways to do that. So just here to answer any questions about the RFP, if you have any. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Greg. Appreciate it. Any questions for Greg? Okay, thanks, Greg. Appreciate it. You don't need to hang on. Did we hear, did we get a phone call yet?
I don't see that he has called in at this point, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, no, we did. All right. Yes, Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I hadn't weighed in yet because I was still waiting to see how everything shook out a little bit. Just a few points. One, I was as angry as anybody as far as the lack of communication from folks that are supposed to be our partners in this process. And, you know, partners don't bring you a done deal, and then if you don't agree to it, everybody else loses out on the deal. That's not usually how partners work. But I've tried to bifurcate my disappointment in that part of the process with the actual merit of the project. And I heard, I got a lot of emails and a lot of phone calls from folks over the last few days. If 10% of that communication had happened in the last two months rather than the last two days, we would be in a very different situation, I think. So many of the questions that we've had throughout the entire project, the, the days at the ports, when, on the days that people would be most excited to go, they couldn't get a port contract in Tampa last year, or one of the years. And the other thing is that whoever sent out the mass emails to get people all fired up, good on them. I think they created a lot of false expectations, and I hope they're ready to deal with those, even if this passes today. It will not be seven-day-a-week service starting tomorrow, which is, if you read those emails, that's what folks believe is going to happen. There's so many other factors in, I agree with some of Commissioner Peters about some of the numbers and data. I don't know that it's all just the rich and wealthy that are taking this from the emails that I read, a lot of folks that don't fit in that category that enjoy the service. There's some merit to supporting it as far as trying to have that opportunity. The waterways as transportation opportunity is something we should be doing in Tampa Bay. It's absolutely something we should be doing in Tampa Bay. So I guess at the end of the day, where I land is, I'm fine doing it for one more year to see if we get that better data shaken out, still at the lower subsidy amount, to see if they get the Florida Department of Transportation assistance, which they did in the past, to see if they get some support from other private entities, which they've done to different levels in the past, and to see where the federal funds shake out. That should all be resolved in the next 12 months. That shouldn't take to year three or four. We should know that in the next year. And we can either do a one-year deal today, or we can use the, as the attorney mentioned, the termination portion at the year. So that's kind of where I've landed.
Any other, any other comments? Commissioner Seal?
Well, I don't, you know, you had mentioned trying to get some more information, and I don't mind waiting to make this decision to comport with what you've stated, if that indeed is going to get us more factual information.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not...
If it's not available by that second meeting in September, then, you know...
Yeah. I mean, that's why I asked Barry, and I'm not, although I saw the possibility in his eyes, I didn't see a lot of, you know, assuredness that he could get where he needed to be in 30 days on information. I mean, and that's not, to be critical, it's...
I understand.
There's a lot of stuff to get through here.
The hard part is that it's a four-year deal that requires subsidy for four years. To be real blunt, I wasn't expecting that.
Well, I'm not supporting for anything longer than one year.
Yeah. And so, you know, we can, we can meet with our partners, and we can meet with the company if you want for the next, over the next 30 days, and I'll probably have more to make a recommendation on. But, you know, at this point, you know, as you stated, the deal was the deal, and it was upon us to whether or not, you know, we supported it or not. Originally, when we were talking about this last fall, what I had heard was that we were going to support purchasing boats, and then, then they were on their own. And that all changed, and we just weren't at the table for those discussions. So we've got a, I'm, I'd be happy to take this on for the next 30 days if that's your pleasure.
Yeah, okay.
Ed has joined us again by Zoom.
All right. We've had two strikes. We'll try one more.
One more?
One more try.
Okay. Ed, we're going to try one last time. If you can unmute on your end, we'll see how this goes.
The technology is not working well for me, but I really appreciate your effort to accommodate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. He's bowing out at this point.
Okay. Okay. All right. Where, you, I saw you hit, are you good?
Well...
No, we need, we need to decide what direction we want to go.
Well, I had a question for Commissioner Seal, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
So, Commissioner Seal, with regard to your comment about waiting, my concern, and I agree with everything that you said, and I am not willing to support it for more than one year till we get all the answers to the things we want to know. But that said, you know... But that said, you know how diligently my office especially has been working along with Forward Pinellas on building relationships with the Federal Transportation Department? And it is my understanding, as Commissioner Gerard spoke to, that if that ferry isn't operating, we will not qualify for those federal funds. And in the federal funds that are in the infrastructure package, which looks like it's actually going to pass. It did? Oh, my God, that is absolutely.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. The 3.5 million social services package.
Oh, well, I am just really excited about the fact that in the transportation piece, there is a lot of money for waterborne transportation. And the waterborne transportation that we have envisioned for during the Waterborne Transportation Committee, that the Subcommittee of Forward Pinellas is very focused on ensuring that the ferry that a PSTA is providing for, the Clearwater Ferry, is electric and that it is able to be wrapped. And it meets the requirements of sustainability and resiliency because it's elected, electric, and it's, it meets the requirements for economic sustainability as well as racial sustainability. So if we can put all of that into the upcoming agreement with HMS with regard to their boats, I mean, I do believe that this has great potential to move forward in a significant way for Tampa, all of Tampa Bay. And so if you could think about that as you're reaching your final conclusion, I worry that, about the deadlines that I thought I heard. I think Jill is making kinds of, I don't know what her facial expressions are meaning, but, and anyway.
She was reminding me that it's scheduled to begin October 1st.
There you go.
So that's, that's all. I mean, but again, you know, it's really your pleasure or the direction you want us to take on this.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, we, we either can vote on it now, take a motion and vote on it, or we can wait to the second meeting in September to see if there's any additional information that gives. I'm suspecting what I'm hearing is it's probably not going to make a difference to me because of the, you know, the funds that they're going to continue asking for and where they're going to, and where we're going to end up having to pay for them from. That's terrible English. I hope my English teacher wasn't listening. But, but I, you know, I just think that's kind of where I'm at personally. I'm very unlikely to support this either way. And so more information is not going to help. I do think that we're ill-prepared to make the decision on the information that has been given, given to us and we should wait and see what Barry can come up with in 30 days. Not only for residents who listened in on Thursday, who thought we were moving in one direction, who may want to weigh in the other way, that gives them time to maybe send some emails in too, to help, you know, talk about the other side of the story, so.
Mr. Chair.
We'd like to give the 30 days if we can, but.
To your point, I'm okay with waiting until the meeting in September. It's before the, it's before, I mean, it would be interesting to see how much can be accomplished between now and September, whatever the date was, I think, ninth, and.
I think it's 23rd is the second meeting, right? No? 21st is the second meeting. We're not two weeks apart this month, right? It's a Tuesday and a Thursday.
So when would it come back to us, Barry?
Sorry, September 21st. I mean, we can't expect this for two weeks.
That's an awfully short, that's an awfully short timeframe to turn it around by October 1st, isn't it?
Well, but then again, I mean, that's, that's your only option if you want us to do that. Otherwise, you need to vote on the contract now.
Well, then, if we wait until then, there's a possibility Commissioner Flowers could be with us and she cares about this issue deeply.
So what is your, you know, if we don't hear anything from you guys on a motion, then we're just going to move it to the second meeting in September and wait to get some additional information because I, and also give time for other, you know, our residents who may not support this to weigh in as well, I think, and to hear from Commissioner Flowers and let's see what we can do in the negotiations on, you know, again, that would give a little bit more time for a lot of different reasons. But that's, that's really, if I don't hear a motion, then that's what we'll do. Second meeting in September.
Okay. So we'll reach out to the company tomorrow and begin that process.
Thank you. Under, next up, item 33 under Safety and Emergency Services.
Okay. This is the Fourth Amendment to the Motorola Solutions contract. This is the multi-tower replacement project. I'd like Jim to come forward. He's here and just explain this because there's been several revisions to this contract since the beginning.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jim Fogarty, Bureau Director, Safety and Emergency Services. This is a amendment to the Motorola contract that they had proposed when they built the additional radio towers and hardened the shelters. At the time they made that proposal, we asked them to provide options for other improvements to the system that may be needed. Five of those options were put off and until today, of those five options, two of those are no longer necessary, but three of them are still being considered. Option number one, two, and four. Option number one is the replacement of the existing hospital microwave system. This is a system that has microwave dishes on the towers that are at each of the hospitals and some of our radio towers that provide communications to and from the hospitals. The system is 20 years old and is needing replacement. The other option is the mutual aid frequencies that are by state statute required and this is a planned option that needs to be exercised and completed. And then the third one is a North Zone redundancy frequency. That's, that option, we ask that you approve this, but we're not going to authorize the work be done until we meet with Motorola and confirm that redundancy has continued to be necessary.
That's it.
Okay. Go ahead.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Seal, second by Commissioner Long. Any other questions? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Real quickly, I have to be at the Supervisor of Elections Office of, I'm on the canvassing board for tonight's election in St. Petersburg against the primary. So I need to leave here in just a few minutes. And so I'm just going to jump ahead real quickly to item 40 and then Commissioner Justice will go back and lead the meeting from 34 and then he'll lead the meeting tonight. So I sent information out on two items, well, three items really, two, two letters of approval to give FDOT our, that we do not wish to restrict the lighting request for, for two requests. One being the Lennox Gastow Syndrome Awareness Day, which is a form of epilepsy. And then one for breast cancer awareness. So as long as you guys are okay with that, I need a motion for approval of those two letters. I would, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, did you have a question? Go ahead.
Well, my question is, I agree with approving it, but I wonder at some point whether DOT will want to set some kind of standards because I can't imagine how much this is going to cost as everybody is going to be requesting that the lighting be changed.
Yeah, I think we have started, I know Kim's had some conversation with their office. I've had some conversation with the secretary in expressing our concern about the increasing number.
Right.
He's going to push it so that they give us enough, enough notice to bring it back here. And at this point, it's like, if you all are okay with it, we're going to go ahead and do it. As the numbers continue to increase, they may revisit those policies.
Thank you.
Okay. So is that, everybody in favor, say aye? Everybody said aye? I can't hear you.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody against it? Okay. Motion carries unanimously. And then the other item was a resolution of support. State of Florida's honorary dedication of East Lake Road between Hurlock Road and Keystone Road to designate that as the Deputy Michael Magley Memorial Road, that section. And we need a motion of support. Commissioner Long on the motion. Commissioner Seal on the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much on that. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Commissioner Justice.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. We're on item 34 under Authority Boards, Officers, reapportments to the EMS Control Board. Mr. Burton.
That's it. You have several reappointments. They're here before you.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Peters, second by Commissioner Long. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Show it passes unanimously. County Attorney, item 36.
Oh, 35.
35.
I'm sorry. Item, Don, you get a break. Item 35, Second Amendment on the Agreement with Willis Towers Watson. Mr. Burton.
And this is our benefits consultant and so this to renew this.
Question, Commissioner Seal.
Yes, I noticed that this changes so that.
Late now.
This, that the contractors will be paying by commission, I guess, to this Willis Towers Watson?
Yeah, so Kimberly Crum is here and I'll ask her to come forward and address that with you.
And I guess I'm just concerned that that creates a conflict of interest.
Good afternoon. Kimberly Crum, Director of Human Resources and Chief Human Resources Officer for Pinellas County Government, the Unified Personnel System. The item that we have before you today is an item asking for your approval for a Second Amendment to Willis Towers Watson Agreement. They have been our benefits consultant here at the county for quite some time. And what we're, we're looking to accomplish here is to provide voluntary benefits to our employees that they have been asking for, for a number of years through the Employee Advisory Committee. And earlier in the year, we have worked with the Employee Advisory Committee as well as the Benefits Advisory Council, which was appointed prior to my arrival here, one from each of the appointing authorities. And we've come to agreement that we want to provide voluntary benefits as it relates to accident, critical illness, and hospitalization policies. And by doing that, we need someone to provide those benefits and to act as broker to sell those benefits. We had an option of paying outright to our consultant. I believe the amount was $60,000 to do an RFP to assist with the procurement of those benefits or they would accept the commissions on these offerings in lieu of the $60,000 cost. It is a great benefit to the county to provide these benefits to our employees and it is a great benefit for us to have zero cost and to have them only accept commissions with regards to those products.
Do you believe that it creates a conflict of interest?
I do not. This is pretty common practice. Someone has to act as broker because we're not licensed insurance brokers and to use your captive group that you already have relationship with, pretty much is the best way to go.
Can you explain what voluntary benefits has to do? You mentioned hospitalization.
Yeah, these are insurance policies that are available in the open market. In fact, most other jurisdictions here locally already provide these policies. And we have elected, because we have a goal of providing benefits to our county employees who are, because they're in many different stages of life, we want to have something for everyone. And so the policies that were nominated by the group and that were approved and agreed to by the appointing authorities was an accident policy where if you are involved in an accident, whether it be auto accident, you break a leg or whatever the issue might be, the accident policy pays a stipend. So you pay a premium that's payroll deducted out of your paycheck every pay period and then that secures a benefit for you in the event that you incur an accident under the policy. And the same holds true for critical illness. You may have heard this called a cancer policy or some such thing as that. Or if you're hospitalized, under a hospitalization policy.
So I guess what I'm trying to figure out is how does this differ from typical health insurance?
Microphone, please.
Sorry, I touched it and I thought it was on.
It's a specialty coverage.
How does this differ from our regular health insurance then?
Right. This is in addition to regular health insurance benefits. So as an example, if you were, if you bought a critical illness policy and you were diagnosed with cancer, you would get a stipend. So the stipend, depending on the type of policy we end up offering, it could be $5,000 if you're diagnosed, if you have a cancer diagnosis. You'd be able to use that $5,000 for anything. Could be for copayments with your insurance, money toward your deductible. It could be for groceries or a mortgage payment. And I think that's really what the EAC representatives have talked about throughout this entire process. They've been very interested in providing this type of benefit because many of our employees do live from check to check. And in that case, just like our public, right? And so in that case, a policy like this can be very, very beneficial.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation. I was just kind of curious about, and you gave us some good information. Thank you.
Sure, my pleasure.
All right. We're on item 35.
Move approval.
We have a motion from Commissioner Long. Is there a second? Second from Commissioner Seal. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Show it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Item 36, County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is an action for approval for the law offices of Bryant Miller &amp; Olive, PA to engage in dual, dual legal representation with Pinellas County and some of their other various clients. There is a County Attorney's Office policy on legal representation of multiple clients that was approved by the Board in 2008. And when we have outside counsel, we have a very strict policy that tracks the Florida Bar ethical rules and other issues relating to protecting you as, as a client that prohibit adverse, directly adverse conflicts when there is representation going on. Now, there had previously been an approval granted in 2008 for Bryant Miller &amp; Olive. They represented at that time, I believe, Largo, Safety Harbor, St. Pete Beach, Newport Ritchie, as well as PSTA. Since then, they have added Dunedin, Treasure Island, and the Pinellas Park Water Management District to their list of clients. And so they're asking that we update that conflict waiver request in the event that there was ever a direct adverse relationship. That, that would end up with them having to pull back from that relationship. Kareem Spratling is also here from Bryant Miller &amp; Olive, if there's any questions from that. But we're comfortable from the County Attorney's Office perspective and we're asking for your authority to sign the conflict waiver letter.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion from Commissioner Long, second from Commissioner Seal. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Show it passes unanimously. Thank you. Item 37.
Item 37 was brought to each of you through a confidential memorandum. I believe Ms. White spoke with each of you relating to this. It relates to the bankruptcy case involved in a lot of the opioid litigation. Because of the timing of the information coming out and some of the representative, or some of the recommendations we're expecting from the plaintiff's class of lawyers and the timeframe, I believe it has to be a decision by September 3rd. And obviously, you're not meeting by then, but we don't have a recommendation from the plaintiffs committee. So we're asking for a delegation of authority to our plaintiffs, outside counsel plaintiffs, lawyers to make that representation or that election within the bankruptcy court. Frankly, this is kind of, the bankruptcy court could go forward and approve this plan with or without, but our vote most likely should be consistent with the goals of the rest of the plaintiff position we're taking in the major litigation, so.
Thank you. Their questions or a motion? There are questions or a motion? Motion by Commissioner Peters?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Long. Further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Show it passes unanimously. Item 38, County Redistricting Update. Anything on that?
The only thing I wanted to mention is that the first meeting of the County Redistricting Board has been scheduled. It is scheduled for September 1st. It is at 6:00 PM in this very room. And that is all I have on that.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Mr. Administrator, we want to go back to Item 23.
Item 23, we do have, Jeff Roors is here. He can better explain that item, and I do have a follow-up.
Okay.
Based upon that.
Good evening. Turn on your microphone, please.
Sorry. Jeff Roors with Business Technology Services. Sorry I wasn't here earlier, but happy to be here and represent this item. Just initial comments. We've been partnered with Cisco for roughly 20 years, and every five years, we do go out to bid to select a new supplier. We base that bid on the best discount based on our projected spending for a five-year period. This contract represents that, and what we do is we typically look at past spending over the previous five-year contract. We look at potential projects for the next five years, and we develop a estimated annual spend, which is really what we see represented here. Sometimes there's architectural shifts where we've now used Cisco instead of like HP or Dell. So dollars that we would have spent with HP or Dell in previous years, we now are spending with Cisco. So I do want to say that this doesn't represent a significant budget increase in BTS. It just really is a purchasing contract. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Seal?
So the replacement of the telephones?
Microphone, please.
Pressed it again. It turned green. The replacement of the telephones, 5.4 million? I mean, it seems like we just replaced those not too long ago.
Yeah, we actually started the project in 2009 and completed it in 2010, and we had a 10-year replacement schedule for that phone system. When we purchased it, we built it into our capital improvement program. So this is the year to begin exploring what our next phone system will be, and it's already built into our capital improvement program, the dollars to replace that system. I think there was a question earlier. We operate a phone system that every constitutional and all departments under the county administrator use, even the sheriff. We provide a lot of phone systems, a lot of call centers, roughly 8,000 individual phones around the county. It's a big system to replace, but this year, we're going to be looking at a hybrid system. So there won't be the standard phone system for everybody, as in past years. It will be a hybrid. But in some areas, like critical infrastructure, like emergency management and the sheriff and those areas, we will probably still maintain a traditional phone system.
Well, that I certainly understand when it's, you know, critical services, but I was just hoping, and is this 24.5 million about the same as the past five years?
It's higher, but higher because of, like I mentioned before, we've consolidated other contracts into this one. So where we would have spent money on HP before, we might be spending it in Cisco now. So it is higher. And then also, we have grown over the five years, and also, we're projecting out at least a couple construction projects. So every time we build a new building, we use penny for Pinellas dollars to fund that, and that actually can add up to over a million dollars of new Cisco gear being procured under this contract for the construction of a new building. So we anticipated at least a couple new buildings being built in the next five years. So there's a lot of projections in here around that kind of spending. That's why it's a little higher than previous five.
Well, when you say a little bit higher, is it 10%? Is it 20%?
It's, I think Joe could help me out, but I want to say it's about 40% higher.
Wow.
Did you say 40?
So previous contract for five years was 10 million, this is 24 million. So it is a significant delta there, but again, you know, this is not apples for apples, because you'd have to also add into the other contracts that have been displaced as we've adopted more Cisco spending and stopped spending in other areas.
Okay, but then what I want to know is bottom line, you know, where are we financially? And if we're saving here, then are we really, where are we?
And I don't think we have that answer. So you said 10 million to 24, but is there 10 million of other contracts that would be displacing, so it's really 20 to 24? Do we have an answer on that?
We don't, but again, recall, you know, that we also have new projects that the spending would come from other sources of funds. So when we project out, we're projecting for the potential, doesn't mean we're actually committing to spending those dollars. So even though it's projected at that number, it doesn't mean we're spending those dollars. But if we were to build a building, we would spend a million dollars on Cisco gear, and it would come out of a different funding source. So there's a lot that goes into these projections, and we have a great opportunity every five years to project that out. And we do our best.
Is this something that is time sensitive or tonight? I mean, it sounds like there's a workshop in our future on this.
Well, we could, why don't we postpone this till the next meeting and let staff look at this and bring back kind of a better cumulative response? Because, you know, I mean, I understand your concern. It's not an open checkbook.
We spent an hour talking about $175,000, and this is 24 million, so.
Exactly.
Yeah, we could postpone till the next meeting. There is a little time sensitivity to this. We have some renewals that do need to be processed, and we have a little bit of an extension to help us there, but, you know, we'd be happy to answer any questions at that point.
All right, let's do that. Do we need a motion to postpone? Motion is by Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Seal. All in favor say aye? Any opposed? Show it passes unanimously. Thank you, Jeff. We appreciate your time.
I got nothing further.
All right.
Senator is here whenever you're ready.
We have gotten through Item 39 and part of 40. Does any commissioner have anything pressing for 40, or can we take a break?
Take a break.
We're in recess until 6:05.
We'll start with item number 41, acting as the Educational Facilities Authority. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Agenda item number 41 is a proposed Tax Equity Fiscal Responsibility Act resolution for issuance by the Pinellas County Educational Facilities Authority of its revenue bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $9 million on behalf of Athenian Academy Incorporated. The public hearing was properly advertised, no correspondence has been received, and the matter is properly before the authority to be heard.
I have no cards on this issue. Is there anyone wishing to testify on item 41? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on item 41. Wishes of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Seal.
And I don't have visual on Commissioner Gerard right now, so we might have to pause for just a second.
All right.
I meant to check our connection at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah, she's here. She's just... Oh, okay. There she is. And then Commissioner Gerard, we were voting on agenda item number 41.
All right, we had a motion by Commissioner Long, we had a second by Commissioner Seal. Further discussion? All in favor, please say yea. Any opposed? Show it passes unanimously. Item 42, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Agenda item number 42 is a proposed Tax Equity Fiscal Responsibility Act resolution for the issuance by the Pinellas County Educational Facilities Authority of its revenue bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $16 million. This is on behalf of Galaxy Education Property Holdings LLC, which is a sole member of which is Galaxy Education Incorporated, which is doing business as Discovery Academy of Science. The public hearing was properly advertised, the matter is properly before the board to be heard, we have not received any correspondence.
I have no cards. Anyone from the public wishing to testify? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Wishes of the board? Motion by Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Peters. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Show it passes unanimously. Moving on to the Countywide Planning Authority, item number 43. Madam Clerk.
Agenda item number 43 is case number CW 21-08. This is a proposal by the City of Tarpon Springs to amend the countywide plan map from residential medium to employment regarding .16 acre more or less located at South Distin Avenue between East Lemon Street and East Boyer Street in Tarpon Springs. The public hearing was properly advertised, an affidavit of publication has been received for filing, no correspondence has been received, and the matter is properly before the authority to be heard.
I have no cards on this. Anyone from the public wishing to testify? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Wishes of the board? Commissioner Seal. Motion by Commissioner Seal, second by Commissioner Long. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Show it passes unanimously. Item 44, Madam Clerk.
Agenda item number 44 is case number CW 21-09. This is a proposal by the City of Tarpon Springs to amend the countywide plan map from employment to retail and services regarding .61 acres more or less located at 41680 US Highway 19 North in Tarpon Springs. The public hearing was properly advertised, and an affidavit of publication has been received for filing, no correspondence has been received, and the matter is properly before the authority to be heard.
I have no public comment cards. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify?
We do have one pre-registered on Zoom.
And Commissioner Gerard has no audio.
What was that?
Just sent me a note.
Can she not speak, or can she not hear us?
Thank you.
Oh, she's back.
Gotcha.
All right, we have... We're on item 44, City of Tarpon Springs. We have one member of the public on Zoom. Go ahead, Jamie Meyer.
Yes, I believe Ms. Meyer is the attorney for the applicant. Ms. Meyer, if you could raise your hand in the Zoom application, and then once you're unmuted, if you could state spell your name, you will have three minutes if you'd wish to make comments.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Yes, this is Jamie Meyer for the applicant, 101 East Kennedy Boulevard, Suite 3700, and I just wanted to make myself available for any questions. I understand that Forward Pinellas will present, I think, the case, but I'm here in case there are any questions the applicant can answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. Are there questions for the attorney? Is there a desire to see a presentation? Any further public comment? We'll close the public hearing. Wishes of the board? Motion by Commissioner Seal, second by Commissioner Long. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Show it passes unanimously. Item 45, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Agenda item number 45 is the second of two public hearings to consider a proposed ordinance to amend the countywide rules, creating a senior housing bonus, revising the map adjustment process, and completing other minor housekeeping changes. The public hearing was properly advertised, an affidavit of publication has been received for filing, no correspondence has been received, and the matter is properly before the authority to be heard.
Any desire for presentation? Seeing none, I have no cards on this issue. Anyone from the public wanting to testify? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Wishes of the board? We have a motion from Commissioner Long, second from Commissioner Seal. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Show it passes unanimously. Item 46, under the Board of County Commissioners, Madam Clerk.
Agenda item number 46 is a legislative petition submitted by Landon Clint Patrick Miller to vacate that portion of the 15-foot right-of-way lying west of and adjacent to the north half of Lot 4, Pinellas Groves, lying in the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter, if you can get all that, of Section 29-30-15, less that portion lying within 33 feet of the north line. I think I need a map. The public hearing was properly advertised, an affidavit of publication has been received for filing, letters of no objection have been received from the appropriate parties. All interested parties have been notified as to the date of the public hearing. Two comments in opposition to the application have been received. The matter is properly before the board to be heard.
All right, do we have a staff presentation? Do you want a staff presentation? Yes, all right.
Please, because I think there's some comments.
Yes, sir. Good evening.
Thank you and good evening. Blake Lyon, Director of Building and Development Review Services. Appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you tonight, and that was an excellent job, Kat, on the legal description. That's not an easy thing to do. I will try to give you a little bit of visual to help clarify those issues ahead of here. So what you'll see, if I can get this working, all right. The property, again, is located on 86th Avenue in the unincorporated portion of Seminole. You can see, kind of highlighted with the yellow pin there in the kind of left side of the map. This is a general overview of the property. You'll see the kind of red indicator there. The part that's interesting to note here is that you have two different plats or subdivisions that are in play. You've got five properties that are on the south side of 86th Avenue that are all zoned for residential estate. They have a rural residential feel. They're one-acre size lots or more, so they have a very different kind of feel and character. The surrounding balance of the properties are in the R3 single-family zoning that's there. And so you have two distinctive plats, and that'll become important in a moment here. What you'll see is that in the graphic here, the area that's indicated in the red is a 15-foot right-of-way that goes the full length of the petitioner's property. So the petitioner's property is that property that's identified with the yellow perimeter around it. And then you have the four adjacent properties to the west of it immediately that are part of the Riviera Heights addition to subdivision. And part of the area of concern, and we have a couple comments that have come from two members that reside at 134th, that are concerned about the existing overhead utility lines and power poles that are located on the west side or the left of that red hashed area. Now, the part that I wanted to make mention while we've got this slide up is that that Riviera Heights plat actually has a six-foot easement that runs along the back of those properties, and the power poles and overhead utility lines are located within that six-foot easement. This area that actually is the 15-foot right-of-way does not contain any Pinellas County utilities, and so when our process goes through and we request county departments and other utility providers to comment on whether or not they have any objections to this, they responded in total with no objections to the release of that right-of-way. And in this case, when you have the release of a right-of-way, in some cases, when it's all part of a standard plat, the right-of-way gets kind of split, and it goes half to this property and half to that property or something of that case. When the dedication comes from entirely one plat, then it goes to the adjoining party from that plat. So that's why I wanted to kind of give that distinction. This Pinellas Grove plat, which this 15 feet is part of, was originally platted in 1912, so that property would then go to the adjacent owner, which is Mr. Miller in this case. So what you'll see here, the left image is confirmation, again, the subject property requested in red. You'll see there, these are Pinellas County utilities, the water being the blue lines, the sewer that's in green. There are no utilities that are currently Pinellas County utilities in that particular area, and the pink rectangle there on the right image is the area that's being requested for vacation. This is a photograph looking from the back of the right-of-way forward towards 86th and the north. So what you'll see in this image is the, basically, the rear yard fence along the left side of the image, and then you can see kind of in the background of the photo, there's a utility pole, again, on the inboard side or the west side of that fence where the neighbors are. And I don't want to try to summarize the concerns of the community members too much, but I know that Mr. Bonanno was not able to attend tonight, so I'll make an attempt to, because I did have a chance to talk with him by phone this morning, and I also talked with both Duke Energy, the petitioner, as well as Mr. Turngren, and Mr. Turngren is here tonight and can articulate his concerns as well. But if I'm paraphrasing it, generally the concerns are, in 2015, there was a lightning strike that hit one of the pole-mounted transformers on the utility pole, and Duke had to come out and service it at that time. And then in 2017, when Irma, we had the power outages that were there. And so the concern is, is that Duke has full access to these power poles through this existing 15-foot right-of-way, even though the easement is on the opposing side of the fence. So when I talked to the Duke representative this morning, I was inquiring about, you know, their no objection in terms of vacating. I said, "Well, how would you service these poles and the utilities that are there if this were to be vacated?" And he said, "Well, we go through the existing easement that we have and take access from those adjacent properties on which the poles are located, and we wouldn't necessarily rely on it." But it's a question of convenience, it's a question of how quickly they can respond to those service needs if there is, in fact, a power outage or a concern. So this next photo is basically flipping 180 degrees, standing at the right-of-way, looking back towards the, again, the neighboring property is now on the right side of the picture, and the subject property on the left. And as you can see, this property has no delineation other than maybe the gravel or the ground that distinguishes it from Mr. Miller's property to the left of this photograph. And so his interest, and again, he can speak for himself this evening, but is really just to assume that into the property and allow for future development on his property for a garage or any other accessory structures that are on this property. The thing that's important to note, the easement, or excuse me, the right-of-way that's here is 15 feet. The setback for residential estate is also 15 feet. So as it exists today, the property line is kind of on the left side, if you will, in this photograph of that gravel roadway. That would be measured from that point. If you were to vacate the right-of-way, it would be measured basically from effectively the fence inboard. So you still wouldn't have any structures in those areas, but it does need to, they do need to accommodate the 15 feet that's there. And this is just a slightly different perspective, again, to show you there. It's probably important to note, and it did come up in a couple of the correspondence, that there has been a bit of discussion in history around code enforcement and right-of-way enforcement efforts on this property. There were really two issues that came to bear. One is a shed, and you can kind of see it at the very back of the property. There's, if I can show you, it's kind of in this far left, kind of the middle portion of the, I'll do on this side as well. And so there's a shed that was originally, prior to Mr. Miller's ownership of the property, that shed was located on the east side of the property. When he and his family acquired this property, they moved it. They did move it up against the fence. They did put it in the right-of-way. It was brought to their attention. They moved it off of the right-of-way onto their property. Our code requirements say that if a shed is less than 12 feet in height and is screened by a six-foot opaque fence, then it can be up to the property line. So there is no setback requirement in that particular set of circumstances. The other portion that was brought up repeatedly over the time was concern about a boat, a horse trailer, a box truck, other things that, equipment that belonged to Mr. Miller and his family parking in that right-of-way and using that for private purposes. And so that has all been moved off of that. But one of the remedies to address that issue is if the commission considers the vacation of this. So we'll leave it at that at this moment. As I referenced earlier, we did inquire with all the county departments, we did inquire with all the utility providers, and there were no objections from any of those entities. So correspondingly, we went through our typical process. I won't go through all of these in the interest of time, but we've kind of gone through our process. We still are in the process of transitioning these from real estate management over to Development Review Services. So we'll get a little more effective in terms of shortening up some of those review times, but right now, this is where this particular issue stands. And so the overall recommendation is, because there were no objections, to consider that, but you may hear differently from some of the community members, and so we'll take the opportunity to respond to any of those questions or comments, should you have any. So.
Questions for staff? Thank you, sir.
My pleasure.
We'll now hear from the applicant, Landon Miller. Good evening, Mr. Miller. You'll have 20 minutes if you...
Good evening. Thank you. I apologize in advance. I'm not the best public speaker, so if I quabble, no, sorry about that. She's handing out a packet for me. I was asked to give kind of pictures of up-to-date. I'll try my best to go through them, just so you can see, Blake did a, I didn't even know he was going to do that, had a lot of the information that I was going to go for. In that packet, the first page is going to be just the shed that is in question, just showing today. I know it's not the greatest picture. If you look down towards the bottom, you'll see 90-something inches. You scroll up. It's obviously under 12 feet tall. That was one of the things that was brought to my attention of, if it were, in fact, going to be too tall. The other thing with sheds, with rural RE, it is actually, you can have more than one shed because it's considered agricultural use. That's in there as well. So the second packet is going to be pictures of the alleyway. These were actually taken today. You can see that there is, the first picture is going to show the one power pole that's in the backyard of the one client, showing back to the south end of the property. The second picture, then, is me backing up even further, as you can see the shed to my left-hand side on our property, out of the way with the power pole in there, the west side of the property. The third picture, I know it seems as though there may be concern of what I'm going to put there, and maybe that it's going to affect their power, and I don't know if it's a growth thing. The third picture is just showing that there is many palm trees that are literally planted underneath the power poles. Duke Energy, when they were speaking with me, they actually said that a couple of them were already into their live wires, which will become an issue. The third picture is me turning around, looking north. You can see in the distance, there's a Brazilian pepper tree that is very large, and you can see the transformer in there, and then I get a little bit closer. So again, more on their property, on the opposing properties, that there is some growth that may need to be addressed. And then just trying to take a picture of, you can see the signs stating that, just so you can see that it was taken up-to-date, showing that everything is off that alleyway. Same, again, a different angle. And then I stepped in my yard facing the west side of my property, just all the way down. They go in order 1, 2, 3, 4, from south to north. That's the second packet. The third packet's just the code ordinance for what I can and cannot put if it were to be granted to me. I want the neighbors to be comfortable in the fact that if there were a storm, I also would not want to be without power. We plan on building a garage one day that will have a mother-in-law studio, because it is allowed, and bring our mother-in-law in, that will be off of one of those power poles. So the county still will need to, yes, they may be driving through grass, so on and so forth. It won't be an asphalt road anymore, but yes, they will have to go through our gate to get to it, but there is still going to be... gate to get to it, but there is still going to be access. And it also just shows, and I know you guys are all aware of this, that, you know, as far as setbacks go, I cannot have anything structurally built there, I can't have a shed on a foundation, so there will be nothing in the way. When we have had our, the shed was put there, because when we bought the house, we understood it was our property, we were wrong, we were asked to move it, we did. When I have put my trailers, my box truck and stuff there, it was a couple of times when I, for instance, was putting grass in the whole yard, putting irrigation in, and yes, out of convenience, I did place them there, but as you can see, have not. The next one is the Frontier easement, Frontier did ask for an easement, they just basically said they would go through with the grass, this is stating everything that they wanted. And then the one, the rest are no objections, Frontier, in this order, Frontier, no objection, Bright House, no objection, Duke Energy, no objection, WOW, no objection, Tico, no objection, Pinellas County Utilities, no objection. Then the company that did the survey, the sketch and legal of it, it's just stating exactly what it is, this was the original one. You'll see later on that I'll get to a different one that they had to do. Then I just attached my approved petition to vacate form. I couldn't, this was on Google Maps today, I tried to get a top view of the home, the picture that Blake showed was with the paddock where our horses stay on the west side of our property. We have flipped that and put it on the east side of our property, because in fact, we do want to build a garage. So this is just showing that you can see that there's our boat in our yard. I couldn't get a top view, I wasn't technology savvy enough to do that. This next picture in the packet is the re-litter, when they advertised the home, this was the one that was given to us, it's got the blue lines showing, and yes, it is my fault for not doing more research before I moved the shed. So that is why I put the shed there two years ago, before we rebuilt the house. The last packet of this is the front of our property. We've owned, we were one of, when we bought it, we were one of the properties that had an additional 18 feet, there was no, sidewalk does not go through the front of our property, but two out of the other three on ours do have sidewalk. Pinellas County came to me and asked if we would give an easement, I voluntarily gave that 18 feet for community improvement on the front half of it. So in that package, it just shows our setbacks, and then attached is the updated sketch and legal of it, showing that we gave that 18 feet right-of-way sidewalk drainage and utility easement, and then just all our paperwork showing that we signed it. I also wanted to state that we did build a home, I couldn't give you 10 packets of this, because it's my last one, we did build a home on that property that was all stamped and approved by Pinellas County. We're still going through, we still have a few things that we need to complete, but as you can see through the top, this is the alleyway here, and this, wait, hold on, I'm sorry.
If you could get as close to the microphone as you can, sir.
I'm sorry. So let's see if I can get it. Where are we at? Okay, I'm sorry. This is the alleyway here, along this outside, and our house, oh, thank you very much. All right, so this is the alleyway here, as denoted, it says 15-foot alley. We, in fact, are eventually wanting to build a garage up here, but what I'm getting at is that we built the home, passed every inspection, did everything per Pinellas County code. We're not trying to get property to pull one over on anybody, on our neighbors or on anybody, we're just trying to simply make it so that eventually, we have some privacy. I have a two-year-old daughter with another one on the way, she got out of the pool the other day, she was naked, I undressed her. I don't think anything ill of my neighbors, but it's my two-year-old daughter, I don't want them to see her. So we do eventually want to put some sort of privacy hedge, again, within coordinates of Pinellas County, but it, you know, again, I just want to express that we're just trying to do it so that we have privacy, we bought 1.2 acres, excuse me, in Pinellas County to try to have some privacy. So that's all I have, and hope you guys will consider what I've stated today.
All right, Mr. Miller, you'll have about 12 and a half minutes for rebuttal at the end, if you want that.
Okay, thank you.
I have one card, public testimony, Mr. David Turngren. If you'll come forward to the microphone, you'll have three minutes.
Hey, good evening, commissioners, I'm David Turngren, 8507 134th Street, Seminole. A lot of what I'm hearing from Mr. Miller is a first-time thing, this has been going on since February of 2019. I've given you all a package of the summary of contacts that I've had with county officials and county departments regarding this issue with the right-of-way. I'm just going to hit my bullet points quickly. The utility access road or easement serves both the residents of Riviera Heights and Pinellas Groves. The access road provides access to no less than three utility poles and as many as four. The same utility poles are currently within the property pens of the homes they service and could easily be moved on to this utility road or easement where they would be more serviceable. As recently as 2015, as was summarized by the county, that pole in my property was struck by lightning, it literally disintegrated the transformer and sent parts flying into the front yards of myself and my neighbor. It was easily accessed by a large truck and crane from Duke Energy, and they were able to restore power quickly with a minimal of service disruption. The road provides access to one property in Pinellas Grove from its west side, and it provides access to five properties in Riviera Heights from their east side. This access is valuable for potential future property improvements, adding to the value of these homes. To grant the petition to vacate to one home in Pinellas Groves, increasing the value of that homeowner's property and decreasing the value of the other five homeowners would be unjust. I understand it's planted for that area, but yet, it's still, its service to those homes in Riviera Heights can't be denied, it's still there. To grant this petition to vacate would unnecessarily reverse, I put nearly seven decades of precedent, but as was pointed out by the county, it's been there since, what, 1912? That's quite a long time. I do not feel that Mr. Miller has conducted himself as a good neighbor, nor as a good citizen. He has repeatedly proven to be untrustworthy and had no regard for his neighbor's quality of life. He has blatantly ignored county employees, thumbed his nose at requests to comply with municipal code, and continued to believe he has no responsibility or obligation to the rules set forth by the Board of County Commissioners. Mr. Miller has demonstrated repeatedly and tends to use the road for his own personal storage facility and junkyard. Much of this material sits on his property even now and can be viewed through Google. Mr. Miller has shown that he's comfortable trying to take something that doesn't belong to him, rather than having to take appropriate action to secure it.
If you'd give your, your final thought there.
I understand my time's up, but I just want to say that in my years of public service and civil law enforcement, I've never seen a time where it was appropriate to reward poor conduct or poor behavior. And I don't think it's appropriate now either, and I hope that the county will deny this request.
Thank you, Mr. Turngren.
For vacation.
Thank you for being here tonight. I have no other cards, anyone else wanting to testify on this item? Mr. Miller, you have a few minutes, if you want a chance to close.
Thank you again. I'll just address the few things that I've heard of, they're also being brought to me as a first time. He stated that he has a record of all his interactions with county officials and county everything. I personally, with my wife, walked over and knocked on the door and gave him my personal phone number, if he had any questions or anything, he could be, I would be happy to address him, person to person, and have never had any interaction. Code enforcement, I believe it's, oh man, I can't remember her name, she came over and we spoke at length on what I can do and make sure that, you know, that there is no problems going forward. And again, since the two code violations, actually, I believe it was one code violation, the shed and the equipment, I do run my own business, I sell kitchen cabinets for a living, so yes, I do have a box truck, yes, I do have a trailer, yes, I do have those things, because that's how I feed my children. He stated there was three to four utility poles in that area, I've shown to you guys both, as well as Blake has shown to you guys both, that there is actually only, in fact, two. He stated that he was concerned that they would not have easy access anymore, and as we've all discussed prior, it is still a 15-foot setback, I still cannot build to it. So yes, they won't be able to drive straight down, they will have to go through my driveway and drive through my grass, but they still will have access to those power poles. He stated that there was five properties that go down this easement, there is actually only, in fact, four. He stated that it would decrease his property value, as far as that point goes, I am taking the responsibility to try to upkeep it, as far as that all goes, as opposed to, I've lived there over two years, I believe it is, we moved in, we built the house, and we moved in February of last year, I believe it was, and I've never had a county person come out to try to clean it. So if I wouldn't have done that, they would, in fact, have weeds probably taller than his fence that he would have been looking at, but I have taken the initiative to keep it up-kept. So I don't believe it would decrease the property value. And the junkyard statement, yeah, I just wanted to assure, I own a business, I actually rent on 131st, I do sell kitchen cabinets, in fact, and it's a small 2,000-square-foot showroom, so we do not have commercial parking, so we do keep our trailers at our own personal house, which is completely legal. And he stated that I would be getting rewarded for not taking the appropriate action, he did state it has been going on since February, and as Blake gave a timeline of, I initiated this, I want to say it was almost a year ago now. So it's, things do happen with COVID, and I have been taking the appropriate action to try to get this property. So thank you for your guys' time.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. All right, wishes of the board or discussion? Commissioner Long.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of questions from the staff, and I'm not really sure exactly which staff person should be answering it, but, thank you, Blake. It appears from the communication we've had from Mr. Turngren, that throughout this time, that this has been trying to be resolved between the neighbors, there has been an awful lot of bouncing around from the staff with no real apparent effort, at least that I could see from the remarks and the, and the chronological data that we received, that there was anybody who took responsibility for trying to get to the end of this. Did I misinterpret that or read that wrong?
No, I, I think you're, I think that's a fair assessment, I think there is absolutely some improvement that can be made on, on our part. I saw the email that you were referring to this morning, and so I've taken the opportunity. I think where part of the confusion lies, and it will rest on, on my shoulders to address this with staff, is that code enforcement is responsible for the enforcement of our Pinellas County codes and ordinances on private property. That responsibility shifts over to Public Works when it's in the public right-of-way. I think where the confusion came initially was, was this property, this 15 feet, an easement or a right-of-way, and the, and the lack of clarity initially on that led to, unfortunately, some confusion or, or kind of misalignment with staff. So we'll get that portion cleared up, but you're absolutely right, we could have done, I think, a more effective job at getting somebody moving forward. Now, one of the things that we have implemented recently with the county administrator's approval is a project management methodology, we've got some, we've got three new staff members that have come on board as recently as April, that are really pivotal in trying to help us have a single point of contact for our customer base, so they don't kind of get pushed to different entities. So with that program and with the implementation of that, we'll, we'll see that streamline and get better.
Thank you, Blake, and may I follow up?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So perhaps you could help me understand, because I'm struggling with the, the, the fact that all along the way, that this, all the different people this went through, there were no objections by anyone, but yet, the, the owner of the property, as well as Mr. Turngren, it doesn't sound to me like either one of them got real factual information that could help them do the right thing.
Well.
Is that wrong?
I have a slightly different interpretation on that point.
Please.
I think, I think one of the things that you heard Mr. Miller comment on is, he was referring to Officer Hartsock with our code enforcement, and kind of walk them through what those code provisions are and what would be an allowable, so he moved the shed accordingly, because it was placed in the wrong location, gave him access to that, those code requirements, so he knew what was available to him. There's also been some discussion about, you know, what is, what is appropriate with the zoning requirements in those scenarios. And so we've, we've taken an opportunity to try to provide that information. One of the things that comes as a result of that, when we talk about code enforcement issues, under Florida State statute, we are required to give a violator reasonable time to correct, and that term reasonable is very subjective. And so one of the things that we look for is, what are the available provisions within our code that can serve as remedies? One of the ways to remedy this situation is the petition to vacate process. So this is one potential solution to address those issues. Unfortunately, this petition to vacate process is a little bit longer, we're working to, to streamline that a little bit more. So it's, it's a bit of a few things to that regard, but I think we have provided some of that direction, some of that response, but we are certainly needing to improve.
And do you, and do you, is it your opinion that Mr. Miller has been a honest and true broker in terms of complying with what the county has asked him to do?
In full disclosure, my, my engagement with Mr. Miller has been a very short period of time. What I can tell you in, in the, my review of the details of this case and the history is, we've made those communications to Mr. Miller, I've gone back through, I've documented, when those issues were brought up, they were, like, the shed was either removed or the equipment that was being parked in that area was relocated, and then, as he mentioned, he started this process about a year ago. So I think, you know, that's the portion of it that's, where we haven't done any favors from our side of it, is we need to be more efficient in how we bring these things, these matters forward. But I do believe he has gone through, and I do agree with his statement, that he has gone through and obtained the permits to remodel the home that was there, in the home that they have today. So there is a permit history that's there, and, and going through and trying to address that. How timely he was, I don't know him personally, so I can't speak to, to those issues.
Okay, well, you've answered my question, suitor bleedin', thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Seal.
Uh, yes.
Microphone.
Is it on?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do we have any record from code enforcement, then?
We do. We had, again, the two issues, there was a complaint and then a case that identified the location of the shed being in the right-of-way, that has been moved on to his property.
Right.
And as I, as I alluded to earlier, if the shed, there's a couple rules that come into play, I'm going to go off of memory here, but if there, you're right, he's correct in that on rural residential properties, you're allowed more than one, he doesn't have more than one, he has just the single one, as long as it's less than 12 feet in height, it can be up to the property line. When he moved it back off of the fence, it was out of the right-of-way and on to his property line, so it is compliant in its current location. It's not on a permanent foundation, so it is a little bit more mobile, as, as sheds often are. So as it exists today, that's, that issue's been resolved. The other issue that got brought up was, again, the box truck, the boat, the horse trailer, those types of things being parked in the right-of-way, again, the need is to move that on to his private property, as he testified. Again, the need is to move that onto his private property, as he testified, and as the photos, I think, will illustrate, he has done that. So it's just a matter of what happens to that piece of land. Does it stay under the county's purview as a right-of-way? Or is that right-of-way vacated, and now he can assume responsibility and make it part of his property?
I noticed in his pictures that he shows a gate that is in front of the right-of-way. Is that legal?
That is not. That would be a violation of that, and we'd have to address the gate in particular. So you may have seen, and I didn't see those photos, but if you look on Google Street View, he's got a fairly tall fence along the entire front of the property. The reason that's available to him for the full width of the property is because what he referenced before is, his property actually goes quite a bit further to the north than the others. He has dedicated that 18 feet in an easement for sidewalk, drainage, all of those things. So in that R3 zoning, the setback is actually 25 feet. That full-height fence that you see actually is 25 feet from the property line. The portion that's not compliant is the gate that's across the 15 feet. Right. So that portion of it, and that would need to be addressed. If your decision this evening is not to grant the petition to vacate, then we would need to seek removal of that gate. He has every right to take that and put a fence down, and essentially, you'd end up with a, you know, a 15-foot strip of land going all the way back with fences on both sides. May not be the most desirable set of circumstances from eyes on it and making sure that it's, you know, nothing inappropriate's happening there, no dumping, no other things. So there is some value in terms of being able to see that space and having people, you know, look after that.
So under the rules of the plating, could we legally allow, and Don, you may have to answer this, could we allow the other four properties to have part of that right-of-way? Or would we have to replat it, or what would we have to do?
We don't really have any right to that, to do anything with that. We don't actually give anybody anything. What you are doing by this, if you were to move forward, is to vacate the county's interest. The property rights flow as a matter of law based on that. Now, we're doing this under, it's been proposed to be vacated under Chapter 336, which is a legislative determination, but it also, in the statute tracks, that it would revert in the same way that an easement within a plat would revert. Because, as Blake explained before, this is on the outside of an Old Pinellas Groves plat. The only people to which that reversion would operate by law is back to the people within that plat, not the people abutting on the other side.
So there is no way you could share the right-of-way with both sides?
If the property owner, after he got it, wanted to, I suppose he could, but the Board doesn't have anything within its powers to direct. Again, when you vacate it, you're not directing where it goes, it just moves there by operation of law. So the easement was granted to you by, it's essentially an easement, the right-of-way, was granted to you by the plat, and you don't have a way to sell it or move it around other than by operation of law.
Okay. That's what I wanted clearly...
Yes, ma'am.
... to be explained. Finally, when you talked with Duke, you know, there's only a six-foot section. I don't know how they would drive a truck down six feet.
They wouldn't.
And that's one of my main concerns.
Yeah, I talked to Jonathan Casper, who's there, I don't know if I'm going to get his title right, but he's with Duke. And so I spoke with him this morning, and I asked, I think, you know, essentially the question that you're asking is, walk me through a functional response. You know, he said they had their field crews go out and take a look at it. Essentially, what they're doing within that six feet is a right-of-access. So they have the poles that are there. If you'll bear with me one second, I'll show you from this vantage point. So the pole, there's four properties, right? The one that's at the corner of 86th and 134th, and the pole sits in the southeast corner of that property, and then the other pole sits in the northeast corner of that property. And so, and the six-foot easement runs north and south, just basically six feet to the left of that red hashed area. And so when I asked him, I said, how would you expect to service those poles and the transformers? And essentially, what they would do is they would have a crew member walk between the side yards, get back to that property, and then climb the pole. If they have a need to get something heavier like the transformer up on that pole, you may have seen them, they have trucks that have larger kind of cranes that would lift it over, and so essentially, that's what they would be, would need to do, is just to lift it into place. And then certainly, access to the east side is easier. It's more timely. But they didn't indicate a need to have that. They said they can service those poles, and because that easement is on the Riviera Heights side of it, that's where they would take access from that side.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. All right. What are the wishes of the board? Pete, can we bring up Commissioner Gerard again? Hit the video. Thank you.
I move to deny the application. I just think from a practical standpoint of, you know, while Duke Energy might be able to get back there, we have no assurances for sure that they would be able to, you know, during a hurricane or a storm, properly access the power equipment.
All right, we have a motion to deny by Commissioner Seal, with a second by Commissioner Long. Commissioner Long, microphone? Microphone, please.
I'd like to remind everyone that the transmission center that covers Largo Medical Hospital is right there, and they needed that transmission center fixed ASAP in order to keep from having to evacuate 340-something patients out of the hospital. So this is no, I'm surprised they didn't remember that if they were asked, but I think those transmission things are really important to keep clear.
I think it's a valid point. I think in most neighborhoods, like in St. Petersburg, there is not an easement like that for a truck to come through. They come through your yard. There is no space between my yard and the neighbor behind me for a truck or any other vehicle to access. They come through, as they've done. Any further comments? Commissioner Gerard? All right. We have a motion to deny. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Nay. Commissioner Gerard, I didn't hear yours.
Mine was an aye.
Motion to deny passes three to two.
Well...
It was a motion to deny, Commissioner Gerard.
Right. Can it pass three, two, or does it have to be four?
This is legislative, a simple majority.
Simple majority? Okay.
So the application is denied. Thank you all for being here on that item. Item number 47, Madam Clerk.
Agenda item number 47 is another legislative petition to vacate. This was submitted by Noel Family LLC to vacate the 15-foot-wide right-of-way of the unnamed street lying south and adjacent to Lot 6, Block 2, of the Pleasant Valley addition to Tarpon Springs. It's north and adjacent to Track 61, Tampa, and Tarpon Springs Land Company subdivision. And then it's east of and adjacent to the easterly right-of-way of Fred Marquis Pinellas Trail, and west of and adjacent to the west right-of-way of Pleasant Avenue. The public hearing was properly advertised, an affidavit of publication has been received for filing. Letters of no objection have been received from the appropriate parties. All interested parties have been notified as to the date of the public hearing, and no correspondence has been received specific to this hearing. The matter is properly before the board to be heard.
Thank you very much. I have no cards or items on this one. Board wishes to see a presentation or anyone wanting to testify on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Wishes of the board? Motion by Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Peters. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Show it passes unanimously. Item 48, Madam Clerk.
Agenda item number 48 is a proposed ordinance amending Chapter 138 related to zoning and Chapter 146 related to historic preservation of the Pinellas County Land Development Code establishing the downtown Palm Harbor Form-Based Code. This is a companion to items number 49 and 50, just for your information. The public hearing was properly advertised, an affidavit of publication has been received for filing. No correspondence has been received, and the matter is properly before the board to be heard.
This is the second hearing. We have seen presentations on this, but I don't want to short this if anyone wants to see a presentation on it tonight. No? Everyone wants to go home? We do have a public testimony on this item. David Ballard Geddes Jr., come forward, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. David Ballard Geddes Jr., I live on Georgia Avenue in downtown Palm Harbor master plan area. Due to improper proactive county planning and inefficient reasonably foreseen expectations in development of the county resulting in unproductivity, the conundrum of broken code, in effect, broken code is being used to aid and abet this concept of redevelopment. Said simply, form-based code redevelopment is based on broken code. I feel this concept of form-based code redevelopment, transfer of development right, as based on Home Rule Charter, Section 2.04Q, is a transfer of political function and power. In effect, what's taking place here tonight is the privatizing of government. Ultimately, the county is aiding and abetting a third-party insurrection of governmental power on unsure ground, insurrecting code on broken code, creating a rogue state within a state of lawlessness. I ask, as I have been ordained to live in a ready-to-serv zone, more so, the county is aiding and abetting a third-party insurrection of power, allowing this insurrection to impose its code, its redevelopment, and transfer of power, allowing a third party to levy against the residents. As I live in a ready-to-serv zone, ready to serve this insurrection of third-party power, I see a longstanding crime syndicate implicating both entities. We can address this issue passively in court, yet unfortunately, over the years, I find your court system to be somewhat defunct on these water issues. Yet, we can conflict this state of aggression with further aggression as this redevelopment is in a rogue state, on furthered lawlessness. Or we can advise both the county and this private entity to lay down all the infrastructure, not just the Lielman, not just the downtown Palm Harbor redevelopment, but all of St. Petersburg and all of Palm Harbor. Then, once you get that infrastructure down, let go of such contrived power and humbly ask for constitutional forgiveness. Thank you.
Any other further comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Commissioner...
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to note that there was a minor change, some minor changes to the ordinance between the first and second public hearing, that the correct version is in your grandicus package. I just wanted to note that on the record.
Thank you, sir. Further discussion or is there a motion? Is there a second? Motion by Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Seals. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Show it passes unanimously. Item 49, Madam Clerk.
Yes, agenda item number 49 is a resolution approving a change in zoning of approximately 64 acres comprising the greater downtown Palm Harbor area. I've got several different categories here. So it's from OPHD, which is Old Palm Harbor Downtown, C2, which is General Commercial and Services, C2H, which is General Commercial Services Historic Preservation Overlay, R3, which is Single Family Residential, R4, which is 1, 2, and 3 Family Residential, LO, which is Limited Office, GO, General Office, C1, Neighborhood Commercial, E1, Employment 1, E1CO, which is Employment 1 Conditional Overlay, and E2, Employment 2. 2, DPHFBC, which is the Downtown Palm Harbor Form-Based Code District. The public hearing was properly advertised, an affidavit of publication has been received for filing. No correspondence has been received, and the matter is properly before the board to be heard.
Thank you very much. Same situation. Do we want to see a presentation? I have no cards for this. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Wishes of the board? Motion by Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Peters. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Show it passes unanimously. Item number 50, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chair, item number 50 is not a public hearing item. It's just a regular agenda item.
Thank you.
So you may move forward with it.
Mr. Burton.
Item number 50 is a resolution adopting the downtown Palm Harbor design guidelines that are attached to the agenda items previously.
Are there questions? Are there discussion? Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Long.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gerard. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Show it passes unanimously. And I know we breezed through those items, but that's a lot of time and a lot of work by our staff that went into meeting with the public and coming up with this, so I don't want that to be missed. All our professional planning staff and community staff, thank you very much for the good work that went into this. I know it's a night that you're very proud to get to, so thank you very much. Is there anything else for the good of the order? We are adjourned.